Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Goffstown Board of Selectmen Meeting, February 27th, 2012. And the first item is going to be the Pledge of Allegiance. Would all stand, please? I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next item is the acceptance or the correction of minute, public minutes of 213, 2012. We need a motion.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Four zero. Okay. Next item is announcements, and we do have a few announcements, and probably I'll start with the shortest one first. It's from Public Works, and it's due to the fact of the mild winter that there will not be a spring road posting this year. By far, it's the mildest winter since the Department of Public Works has been tracking temperatures. And I'll repeat, there will be no spring road posting this year, which is unusual. So that's why I wanted to repeat that. Okay? Another one, Dave, is from Public Works. Would you like to read that one, please? Yes, from Mr., yes, Mr. Barnum.
This was a letter received from Mr. Barnum, and addressed to Director of Public Works. An excellent job of reworking the shoulder on Hooks at Road last Friday. Your excavator operator has a very deft touch. I imagine creating a small ditch takes, like they did on that road, a finer control than digging a larger one. The ditch is certainly much more effective and hopefully long-lasting than the one previously scratched out. Thank you for your department's effort. I'm sure that all who travel on Hooks at Road will appreciate what should be an ice-free remainder of the winter. We certainly are thankful for now having ice barrier across the end of our driveway, too. And signed, Mr. Barnum.
Okay, great. Great job to the excavator operator. Also, we have received a information from the Prudential Spirit of Community Awards. It's honoring outstanding community service by young Americans, and we have a, an award, well, recognition that we thought that you'd like to know that Anna Ravenel of Goffstown is today being named one of the top youth volunteers in New Hampshire for 2012 in the 17th Annual Prudential Spirit of Community Awards. This is an extraordinary honor. More than 26,000 young people across the country participated in this year's program. As a distinguished finalist in this year's program, Anna will receive an engraved bronze medallion at a local ceremony. And I'll read what is in a press release. Anna Ravenel, 16, of Goffstown, New Hampshire, a junior at Goffstown High School, made and donated care kits filled with homemade fleece pillow baskets, stuffed animals, and activities for seriously ill children undergoing treatment. Anna, whose project was inspired by her family's experience when her older brother was diagnosed with cancer, solicited donations, made the blankets, and delivered the kits to David's house, an organization that houses families of hospitalized children. And I think that is a very excellent award, and I just ask if at some point we have a discussion, perhaps the board would send her something signed by the board to that effect. So if that's okay with everybody, we'll have the town administrator put something together for us. And that's an excellent, excellent job, Anna. Nice job. Parents should be proud, very proud. Do we have any other announcements? I'll leave that sitting. Okay. Next item on the agenda is public comment. We're on schedule, so at this point, we'll take comment from any members of the public. Elizabeth, we'll need your name for the record.
Elizabeth De Brua, and Chair of the Historic District Commission. I'm sorry I'm coming to you in public comment, but I can't be here later when the HTC does its report, so I wanted to give you some information now, and then when you get to the committee reports later on, you can take whatever action you feel is necessary. But basically what's going on, this is related to the renovation of Grassmere Town Hall. As you remember, we have an L-Chip grant that we have just asked for an extension on. It goes to June 5th. All work must be completed, and all bills must be paid by that date. We're getting very close to the end of this project, and what we're asking for now is we would like to ask for a sole source for a small chunk of work that needs to be done in the larger project. And just to kind of explain this a little bit, Phil normally is our general contractor for the Grassmere Town Hall. He has sort of stepped back from that role a little bit because he, well, it's a long story, but basically, he, he has stepped back a little bit because he knows the, one of the contractors very well, and he didn't want there to be any sort of hint of, no question of impropriety. So he stepped back from the project, and we have decided to move forward as our own general contractor. The town is doing this so that we could stretch those dollars as far as we possibly could. In the process of that, the timing of this grant was a little rocky because Dave Roberge was going to be the general contractor. He got ill. Mark Tessier was going to take it over at the same time the town hall was undergoing a reorganization, so our liaison switched from Brian to Derek. All this was happening at exactly the same time as we were drawing up the RFPs. So what happened was essentially, one of the, one of the subcontractors on the project was a plasterer, okay, because the walls are plaster. He was contracted to do a main, a large part of the project, but then each of the other subcontractors had little teeny plastering jobs that was in the original RFP. We decided that instead of having each one of these subcontractors do a little bit of the plastering, we should pull all those out and have the plasterer do all of it. The problem was that through all the sort of changes and everything in the RFP, the little plastering jobs got taken out of the subcontractor's RFP, but they never got put into the plasterer's RFP. So we did not at first realize this. Derek has stepped up and ended up actually being the general contractor for this project on top of all of his other duties. He spent some time, we had thought the plasterer was supposed to be doing all this. It took a great deal of time to figure out that, no, he, he wouldn't do it, and that he was not responsible for doing it according to the RFP. So now, here we are. We have a couple of months left to get all this work finished up, and we realized that it, it never made it into any of the RFPs. We have one more contractor who has been waiting for months to get in there and finish his part of the project, but he can't because he's waiting for the plastering to get done. So we are asking now for single source, sole source, because this same contractor can go ahead and finish the plastering that needs to be done, and he can finish the rest of his chunk of the project, and we can finish this up and be finished on time.
What is the cost, what is the budgeted cost to finish the plastering?
The estimated cost, we think Derek said, was between $5,000 and $7,000. We're concerned that if we send it to RFP, we're just, we're going to be cutting it so close, because the thing that has to be finished is, it's the bathroom, and the walls aren't, you know, he can't move forward on the bathroom until the walls are finished. And we're just, when we looked at the timing and everything, it was, it was going to be cutting it so close. I mean...
Is the, the person, or have you identified the sole, I mean, you're out of this, right? Is that why Elizabeth's here? Because you're not here?
She's the chair.
Right. But you're also on the selectmen's rep, but you're, okay. Is, is the person or the entity that you're looking to sole source with for the plastering, is that the person that has done already some work?
Yes.
Okay.
This contractor has worked on the project before, and it's the same contractor who's going to finish the bathroom. So instead of trying to coordinate getting two different contractors in there, we could just have this one person do it, and he could do the whole thing.
Can I keep going?
Go right ahead.
So I would assume that whoever is performing the role of general contractor for the town and/or the HTC is satisfied with the work that has been done prior?
Yes.
Okay. And my last question, when we hired this original plasterer, did that go through a bid process?
Yes.
And that person was the low bid at the time?
Yes.
Okay.
If I can just summarize, we're basically taking the people who've been awarded the contracts on the projects.
Already, and now they're just doing it.
And it's basically a change order. Basically what it is.
But because it's 5,000 to 7,000, because of the purchasing policy.
Well, for what it's worth, I mean, I have software that if you want to let me know how many square feet you've got, I can tell you if it's a competitive price or not, so if you want me to do that.
Well, I don't think that it's only, that isn't the only issue, is, but they have to, the contractors have to meet the guidelines of the Secretary of the Interior standards, and they generally, that was the issue, is other times when we put stuff out to bid, we get bids from people who have no experience working on these types of projects.
This is historical restoration.
Yeah, it's historical plastering. So it has to match the plastering that's in there already. So it does really limit, I think, I think originally, we only got two bids for reputable plasterers?
I believe so.
It's not horsehair plaster?
No.
No, 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 no. No. Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay, I just want to make sure you guys had the information so that you can do whatever you need to do when it gets to that point.
Is that it for this? I mean, is that, is that, this is, so this is the key thing that has to happen so that everything else can get triggered and move forward?
There's a little teeny bit that the electrician's been waiting on, and then the finishing of this...
You can't do that until the plaster...
No, nothing can go forward.
Nothing can move forward.
That's what's been the holdup.
Yeah. We've been waiting for months. Then the bathroom, and then the bathroom gets done, and then it's done.
But just, yeah. The main holdup was one of the contractors who, for some scheduling or something, couldn't get in there to do the, put the blueboard up for the plaster, and that's when this came to light, because everybody's waiting around for the plastering to get done, and, well, when's the plastering going to get done? When's the plaster, and that's what brought it all to light.
Yeah. And then when he finally got in there, he only did part of it, and we're like, wait a minute, where's the rest of it? And he said, oh, I'm not contracted to do that. So that's what happened. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on. We have a 6:30 appointment with Representative John Burt, and I'm just going to ask if there's anybody else, is anybody you're waiting for, is there any reason why you couldn't start a little ahead of schedule?
There is none.
Okay. You're wrong.
Thank you. I have my, just for a clock, that's what I'm looking at, is I want to make sure I stay on task. So if you see me looking at this, it's, it's for that reason, a clock. I was hoping there was one behind your head, but there's not.
One's behind your head.
Yeah. We need a mirror there so I can see backwards. I am Representative John Burt, and I am here as a representative tonight for the town of Goffstown and where that I represent. I do want to talk a little bit about the January 30th Selectmen's meeting, and then also legislation that's coming up. There was a little confusion on January 30th that I watched, and that's why I'm here. I am a pre-stater, not a freestater. There was a little confusion that, you know, I've heard people say that, oh, John Burt's a freestater. Well, I am a pre-stater, which that means I came well before they did. I am here for the same reasons. Nothing wrong with a free state project. I know several members. And I, I really don't know what their agenda is, their major agenda. I just know a few things. Lower government, lower taxes, personal freedoms, accountability. Almost sounds like a Republican. So, you know, I, I definitely support those concepts. There are other agendas I'm not involved with, so I just wanted to let you know. Also, I moved here in 1998. Shortly after that, I was married. I moved to Woodsville, New Hampshire. That's how I got into New Hampshire from Vermont. I bought property in Goffstown in 2003, 2004. I can't remember when, it was around that time. Could have been early 2004. I sold my business in Vermont in 2007. The biggest thing that I was happy to sell it for was, I sold it in January of 2007, right at the peak, before the crash. That was another one, and then I didn't have to travel two hours to go to work, which I can't imagine doing that today. There was quite a bit of confusion with a other, another representative that was here about prime sponsors and cosponsors of bills. I wish Steve was here, hopefully he's watching, because I know he had a couple of questions. Not that I can speak for other representatives, but I feel I am going to speak for other representatives, and I'm definitely speaking for me. If I'm the prime sponsor, and what the prime sponsor is, is the first name on the bill, I support that bill. There's no ifs, ands, or buts. I would not put my name on a bill I did not support. So I just wanted to make sure that's perfectly clear. If my name's first, and there's only three bills that I'm first this year, I'm the prime sponsor. If I'm a cosponsor, what a cosponsor really does is the prime sponsor will go around and say, look, this is the concept. This is the idea I have. This is why I'm bringing it forward. Somebody, a constituent, or I came up with it, or however it came about, this is what I want. Could you please cosponsor? Cosponsors really don't do a lot of work. They just kind of like, you know, support the bill. In committee, if it's in front of me, I'll say, you know, this is a good bill, and this is the concept of it. Just kind of boost it up a little bit. At that point, I still support the bill. Now, during committee work, if something comes in front of me, or in another committee, if the bill's somewhere zelt, and it's like, whoa, geez, I shouldn't have put my name on that. Luckily, I have not had to do this, but there are reps that will say, you know what, I, I can't support it at that time. But most of the time, if your name is on a bill, you support the bill. So I just wanted to make that clear, because I know there was a lot of confusion. I do want to talk about HB 1305, which is the poll tax. That's the telephone poll tax. I was the prime sponsor, so I supported that bill 100%. I worked on it for 10 months. I held its hand right until the life support system was pulled from it, because as you know, the bill died in-house. I didn't like to see it die, but bottom line, it's gone. It's over. And that's one thing I like about state versus local politics, is that the state, the second the bill is dead, everybody moves on. For some reason, in local politics, it's a little different. People kind of hold these little things, and it's like, no, let's, you know, I like the way the state does it, because when something's over, it has to be over. You put it behind you, and you move on. The original ought to pass was 133 to 161 to pass it. That's a pretty close vote. If you look at the numbers, there's only 24 votes difference. So the bill lost by 24 votes, which is, with 400 reps, that's, or a little less than that vote, and, you know, that's pretty good. And then it went to inexpedient to legislate. That was 181 to 113. That's quite a spread. That's, you know, over, you know, 70, or, you know, pretty close to 70, and, you know, the bill's gone. The reason I supported 1305, the poll tax, and why I brought that forward, is bottom line, it's a new tax. Some say it's just shifting of taxes, some say it's, it's taxes that were due, you know, it is a new tax, because if you look at your phone bill...
John, you said you...
This is a, a, excuse me, but you...
The poll tax is an exemption from the poll tax.
Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you for the clarity. Yes, it's to exempt the tax.
Just so that everybody understands, this, this, this came forward two years ago. This exemption, this very...
The exemption was done away with under the Democrat-controlled House two years ago, yes.
I just want, you left out a very important word.
I did, yeah. Thank you very much. I, I'm glad you said that, because I want to say it is exemption, yes, absolutely, it's an exemption. It's to not make them pay this tax, and it's an exemption that's been in place since 1990. You know, I don't want to say too much on this, other than the bill is gone, but that's why I support it, is because bottom line, who, this is going to affect this new tax, and that's what this is, is it's going to affect businesses, the poor, and the elderly. And that's why I was so passionate on fighting this bill. And this was truly a nonpartisan bill. I love when they're nonpartisan, because, you know, again, I don't like the real nasty politics part of it. The elderly that have the lifelines, they have to have a landline. The last number I heard, there's 250,000 landlines left in this state. That's it, and it's dwindling every day. They're going to pass this tax on to just landline users. There's a CST tax when the exemption happened in 1990. That is where this came from. In 1990, the state did away with the poll tax and had just the CST tax, because it covers everybody with cell phones, you know, satellite phones, internet phones, any, well, I don't think internet, Comcast, that's what I meant by internet Comcast phones. They're all covered under the CST. So I, and quite a few others, feel that this is a double taxation. I don't think this is the end of, of the poll tax. I think it'll be back. I do want to move on to HB 1279. That's where there was a little bit of talk on January 30th, and I just want to be very brief on this one. What this was is HB, House Bill 1279, is relative to the voting right of certain budget committee members. Representative Pratt was the one that introduced this bill. He was the prime sponsor. He reached out to other representatives to see if they would sponsor the bill. He told me the concept of it. I liked the concept, so of course I jumped on. It went to my committee. It came out of my committee to, I'm trying to think what it was. Well, it ended up dying out on the House floor by quite a margin of 227 to 84. So the other reps, they didn't like this bill, so that was the end of that. But what I want to talk about on it is why I supported it. Occasionally, I'll go to the school board meeting, and I'm the liaison, I guess, from the budget committee to the school board. I'll sit there, and this is what the thinking of this bill was. I take notes. Rarely, they'll ask me a question, but occasionally, they'll say, hey, John, how about this with the budget committee? And then I'll answer to the best I can, or get them the answer. Not at one point, I ever have a vote. Not that I expect to have a vote. And that was what the concept of this was, is that the liaisons from other committees that come to the budget committee shouldn't have a vote. You know, some disagree with that, others say, yes, they shouldn't. And with that, is because it slants the vote. I was elected to the budget committee. I wasn't elected to the school board. So I don't expect to vote ever on the school board until I'm elected there. And that's why, when this bill was brought forward by Mr. Karen, he was the one that came up with this idea. He went to Representative Pratt, it came forward. Representative Pratt reached out to the other three representatives, including me, and asked if we would support the bill, explain the concept. I like the concept, I still do. Unfortunately, the bill is dead in the House, so it won't see the Senate. I guess in January 30th, Mr. Gross made some statements, and that, I just want to clear them up, if you don't mind, is a, one statement was, and this is quote, I listened to it about four times to make sure I got the right quote, "I'm going to get you. I'm a state rep, don't mess with me. I'm going to get my cronies. Mr. Burt has an issue with me." You know, Mr. Gross and Select Board, I don't have an issue with you. I don't. This bill was brought in May of last year. The deadline was May. So this bill was already introduced way before the budget committee ever got involved in it. It was in November or December when Mr. Gross and I had a small issue on this. After the issue, we shook hands, and that was the end. I live by the way the state goes, you know, the state politics in Concord. Once something is over, you move on. Like I said, this bill was filed six months before any issue of the water precinct. You know, and not to hurt your feelings, but bottom line, I never think about you, or unless we're in a meeting together. That's the only time I think of you, so there's no, oh, I got to get Scott Gross, or there's, you know, an issue. I really just don't think about you, you know, which is nothing personal, it's just, you know, when I'm not...
That's a good thing.
Well, it is. If I'm not in a meeting with you, in a budget meeting, you're off my radar. So I just wanted to say that, that there is no issue with you. This bill was introduced, so I hope you see the timeline, that the incident you and I had, six months after this bill was introduced, you know, there's zero relevance to this bill of any thought from me.
We're talking about 1279, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
This, this is a bill that would have done...
Would have done away with the voting members from the Select Board, water precinct, and school.
So that...
On the...
Budget Committee, yes.
So that would be like the selectman who's on the planning board, who is a voting member, should not be a voting member by the law. If you carry that logic forward...
I would agree with that. I would agree that the planning board is the planning board. The selectman's rep should be advisory only. They should not be voting.
Hey, John, if you, Representative Burke, if you don't mind, I have the, the House Journal...
Yes.
For municipal and county government, HB 279, relative to voting rights.
Yes.
Majority of it was inexpedient to legislate, the minority was ought to pass, and...
It was 16 to 1.
Correct. And there's just, what I found inside, in, in this, from Representative James Coffey for the majority, instead of going, reading through this whole thing, I mean, anybody can, can get this into the public record, but what I found interesting on here also, because that same, this, this, what he states in here would also carry to any other board, okay? That this was, would be, it says, "This proposed change seems to assume that members associated with the other boards would form a voting bloc that would work against the goals of the budget committee. In many towns, only the selectmen have a voting representative. The members of the three boards that could furnish a representative often have diverse interests from each other and do not always represent a stacking of the board. What they can bring to a budget committee is better understanding of their board's needs and goals, which should be used to produce a constructive consensus. Having a board member toil on a committee assigned to accomplish a difficult task of assembling a good budget without a voting voice in the outcome would be detrimental to the budget, budgeting process. It is the opinion of a bipartisan majority of the committee that problems with local budget committees should be resolved at the local level and not by a global fix that would have negative unintended consequences in the many communities where the present process works well."
Yes, and 227 representatives agreed with him.
Right.
And 84 did not. And that's why the bill died in, in the House. It came out of my committee, ITL, inexpedient to legislate, it went to the House, and it continued after the floor fight.
Right.
So, yeah, there was 227 representatives that would agree with that. The other one, real quick, is, geez, I thought I printed it on both sides, but I guess I HB thirteen seventy-six was discussed a little bit on January thirtieth. That also came out of my committee, inexpedient to legislate. It went to the House floor, and just by a voice vote, there was no floor fight on that. That bill has been killed. So, it's dead and gone. See the end of that.
That was the one that the operating legislature would not have been allowed to be amended at town meeting?
Yes. Yeah, I was, um... You know, I had questions on that bill. I wasn't a big supporter of that bill. I thought there was going to be a floor fight. I think this, it was the vote in the committee was sixteen to one. I believe I was the one that voted against the committee only to get the, to put it on the regular calendar.
Yeah, if you, if you don't mind on that, Representative, I also have the, the journal on that one.
Yeah, and Representative Pratt was also the one that brought that forward.
Correct. Correct. Um, but I'd just like to read for the other members of the board because, just so everybody understands, we got the information of the bills that you wanted to discuss.
Yes.
Sue got it this morning.
Yep.
And I met with Sue this afternoon, and that's the first that I got this, so I, I was quick for me to get this, so I... None of the other board members I've been able, have been able to share this with, but out of the House record on House Bill thirteen seventy-six, Representative James P. Belanger for municipal and county governments, and then it's, this is the way the record is written, it's, it's a, it's a colon. Here we have yet another sincere attempt to fix the official ballot referendum, SB two, method of annual meetings. It, however, does not affect all municipalities, but only those with municipal budget committees. If passed, this legislation would prohibit the voters attending the deliberative session from making any changes to the annual budget as proposed by the budget committee. The budget is likely the warrant article with the most impact on a community, but this bill would deny the voters any opportunity to modify it and would certainly result in removing reasons to even attend a deliberative session. If the budget committee's numbers would go directly to the ballot without benefit of voter input, the already sparsely attended deliberative session would be reduced to even fewer voters to act on the other articles. In effect, the budget committee would have free rein over the budget that gets presented to the official ballot. This would disenfranchise voters who attended the deliberative session, and the vote was sixteen to one, as you stated.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, the, the bill, that bill had problems.
Right.
So, I would probably agree with the gentleman, Representative Belanger, on writing that. Now, there was another statement with communications, you know, that, that the state reps don't communicate with the selectmen. What I would like to do is come here occasionally and sit before you and take any questions. I'm glad you brought that up. But it also does go both ways. In today's, you know, my telephone does ring in, so I can take phone calls. So, if there's any time you guys want to ask a question, just pick up the phone and dial. My phone number is six-two-four-five-oh-eight-four, and that's my home number. As Representative Heikel, when he was here, and again, that's six-two-four-five-oh-eight-four. And my email is john, J-O-H-N, at bertnh, like Bert, New Hampshire, B-U-R-T-N-H dot com. As he pointed out, I receive... During a good week, when things aren't heated, like right to work and a few other bills, I probably receive, you know, five to eight, ten calls, which is very manageable. During a heated debate on some bills, you know, the phone just rings off the hook. I try to get to them all. One week with the emails, I think I received over a thousand over that speed limit up on the lakes. I mean, it was both sides, over a thousand emails in one week, and I'm going, my God, how do you even begin to start fixing that? But, you know, a lot of reps, we got through it, and the speed limit stayed. But, so I just want to say to anybody that wants to talk to their state rep, I am here. And the communications, you know, I'm very open. I want to hear from people. You know, the gay marriage bill on January thirtieth got brought up. You know, I do get a ton of calls on that, especially a ton of emails, and there's a lot of support for it, and there's, uh, some support to keep it as it is. So, you know, I don't know where that bill is in the State House. It's floating around. For some reason, it hasn't come forward. I'd like to go through, if you don't mind, just a few bills and then touch on one last bill. And I just want to tell you some of the bills that are coming through the House. And that came out of my committee. I'm on municipal and county government, as everybody knows. One bill, which was seventeen to zero, and just to make sure everybody knows, I did add them all up. Before I get started, there were sixty-two bills. I think there was a little more, but I got sixty-two bills in front of me here. I'm not going to go through all of them, just, you know, maybe four, five. Out of that sixty-two bills, I, I went with the committee forty-three times, that's seventy percent. And then I opposed the committee's recommendation of kill the bill or ought to pass the bill, nineteen percent. I wasn't alone every time. There was occasional on big bills, big hot topic bills, yeah, I was alone, but most of the time I'm not. So, out of that thirty percent, the nineteen bills that I was opposite of the committee recommendation, you know, I usually had a couple of friends with me or other reps that joined me. But here's one bill that, there was a lot of discussion on it, HB fourteen ninety-eight, and what that is, is repealing the dog license requirement. I talked with a lot of people. That was right down the middle. But it came out of my committee, seventeen to zero, the vote was of ITL, inexpedient to legislate. It went to the House floor, and it's gone. So, that's one bill that came through my committee. Here's another one that I made the motion to ITL. And it was HB fourteen fifty-one, establishing a statewide property tax credit for a resident maintaining a personal vegetable garden. When I saw that, I go, what is that? You know, I just, I couldn't imagine it. So, in a sense, what it is, is if Nick wanted a vegetable garden, he would get a seventy-five dollar tax credit, and you, Phil, would have to pay for that tax, because when anybody gets a tax credit, some, your neighbors are paying for it, somebody else.
No, I wouldn't. I'd get a vegetable garden twice the size of his, and he'd have to pay me.
Yeah, that could work.
I got more land than him, I think.
But, you know, again, that was a, that was a unanimous vote. Here's another one, House Bill fourteen eighty-two, relative to the exemption from property taxations for hospital. That is really over the river's edge, hospital, that issue. I believe the medical building behind the Shell station is probably being taxed, I would have guessed. And where the issue was, is that if the Elliott Hospital bought it, then it, it comes off the tax rolls, and that's where the issue was. Originally, the motion was to kill the bill, seventeen to zero, came out of the committee. It came back to my committee by the House. The House sent it back. After further testimony, this is one bill that I was by myself on. It was sixteen to one to kill it. And because I saw some abuses from the Elliott Hospital, and I said, you know what? This needs to be heard on the House floor. I don't want to make that decision here. You know, it needs to be heard. So, that's what happened, is I voted sixteen to one to, you know, I voted against the committee recommendation. Here's another one. Jim, Representative Coffey, made the motion to kill this bill, sixteen to zero, and it was House Bill fifteen sixty-one, which is discontinuing regional planning commission. They wanted to do away with it. The vote was sixteen to zero. I did vote with the committee on this because I did see some harm that it would do. The prime sponsor of the bill had a lot of good points.
Who was that?
Representative McGuire, if I remember right, Dan McGuire, was the representative that brought it forward. He had a lot of good points on doing away with it. But then after hearing the, and each committee room will hold about thirty people. Well, we had probably seventy to eighty people. They were packed in there like sardines. And after I heard all that testimony, and that went on for a couple hours, you know, I, I could see the benefits of having the regional planning commission. I think there is still a feel of some people that would like to do away with it, but it came in front of my committee, and like I said, it was ITL, inexpedient to legislate, sixteen to zero. Here's another one that, uh... Originally, the motion was ought to pass, but that was defeated, so the motion of ITL came forward, fourteen to three. And this is on HB sixteen seventy-four, and what it was, is to reduce the interest rate that the towns charge from eighteen percent down to nine percent. And what I liked about the bill, why I supported the bill, I was one of the three. So, this bill, I was not by myself. There was fourteen members that wanted to kill it because they said, no, the towns need eighteen percent. The reason I went with the three, you know, the two other people, is because it was enabling legislation. If the towns wanted to do it, they could do it. If the towns wanted to keep the eighteen percent, they could keep the eighteen percent. It was a choice, so I'm going, well, why not give towns choices? Because some towns would say, you know, eighteen percent is a lot. So, we're going to lower it down to nine percent. You know, so it was just a good bill.
Well, I, I know a lot about that because I've had a lot of discussion with that, but one of the, one of the biggest concerns with that is, if you lower that down to nine percent, in today, when somebody's tax bill comes and it's either they pay their credit card, that's nineteen, twenty-six percent, or they pay the taxes, they're going to pay the credit card rather than the taxes, and everybody else in town is carrying them, so that was, that, that's a main issue. And I'll tell you that I have not found any selectmen in another town in the state of New Hampshire that supported the bill.
I did hear a lot of that testimony, that people would take the choices of not paying their taxes. And I guess there would be some of that. You know, I just looked at the bill that it was enabling. The selectmen could, or the town, the city aldermen could do it, or they didn't have to. But then there was the other side where they said that certain town people would push the selectmen into doing it, and that's where they said, you know what, we need to kill the bill. And the bill did go to the House floor, ITL, and that's where it ended up staying, was ITL. Another bill that I prime sponsored, which I did want to talk to you about because I think a lot of people have this, was HB twelve eighty. I was the prime sponsor. And what that is, is relative to the sale of EZ Pass transponders and relative to the online New Hampshire EZ Pass service centers. What my intent, a, a couple constituents brought this to me, and I worked on it over the summer, or before last May, I mean, over last summer, before I finally introduced this. What my intent was, is to make EZ Pass easier to get, because if any of you ever tried to get an EZ Pass, it's not easy, and it should be easy. I was very flattered after this bill was killed. It's ITL'd, and it's going to come to the House floor, and I'm not going to argue it, because the bill served its purpose. What happened is, I got on the House, you know, in, in the front of the Committee of Transportation, and I explained what my, what I want out of this bill. I want EZ Pass to be sold in stores, so anybody can buy one. You don't have to go to like six service centers. I want the online easier because New Jersey EZ Pass is very easy to use. New Hampshire's is not. Well, then the transportation guy from the Department of Transportation, he gets up in front of the committee, and he goes, geez, I don't know what Representative Burt wants. We're doing all this. Well, to come to find out, because of this legislation, you know, this bill coming forward, they stepped up and said, you know what, we better do this, or they're going to make us. So, they said, you know, so now they're selling them in stores. So, the committee came to me and said, could you please, you know, would you mind if we killed your bill? And I said, no. Mission accomplished. I'm happy. So, you know, so I think EZ Pass is going to be a lot easier for people that are going to come up. You know, I will take questions if you have any. If not, I got, you know, four or five other bills. I wouldn't mind telling you that are coming forward.
Yeah, just going back to sixteen seventy-four, if you could-
Sixteen seventy-four?
Yeah, that was the one we just talked about, the one prior, the one with the interest rates.
Oh, yes.
If you could just double-check on that one, because I, I was just looking at it, and it says in the body of the text, unpaid taxes, the taxes which are not paid, just so you, to preface this, we talked long and hard about that one because it would have a, as, as the chairman stated, we felt it would have a very negative impact on the municipality where people would, would rather pay a higher interest rate credit card than pay late taxes. But the statute, the language says, "The taxes which are not paid when due pursuant to RSA seventy-two B colon four shall bear interest rate at the rate of eighteen percent," and then it was strike through nine percent per year, computed from the date, from the due date. So, I, I didn't see it as enabling. I saw it as, you know, usually when you see the word shall, doesn't say anything. I don't, I'm looking through it. I don't read anything that it would give the town the option to charge a lower one. And if I'm wrong, I'm wrong. I just, I just read through it.
Yeah, the original bill was not.
Yeah.
The original bill, and then there was an amendment act-
Okay.
-that allowed it to be enabling.
Okay.
And that's one of the reasons I and two other representatives jumped with it, because it was enabling.
Okay.
I have the one that says amended-
Okay.
-bill, and it, it is enabling.
Okay.
One bill I did forget, I do, that is in front of you. Well, geez, I just had it right in front of me. Oh, yeah, it's right here. It is in front of me. Is House Bill three eighty-two. When Senator De La Sandro was here, you asked me, after he left, if I could check on the cemetery fences.
Yeah.
Well, this bill was in front of my committee, and it was unanimously, I believe it was unanimous, passed out through the committee ought to pass. It went to the House floor, and it went to the Senate, and I, I thought it was gone. I thought it was history, because it happened last year.
Right.
Well, what happened is, on the third month, the twenty-third day of last year, it was introduced into the Senate, and then it was put into a study committee. Yeah, I have no idea what they were studying, because it was pretty clear for us that it was a good deal for the towns. From what I understand is that the Senate has passed it on one twenty-five of this year. They sent it back to the House, which, that's where it has to go. We have to concur with the, they call it enrolled. We did. So, we've accepted what, you know, they're, they made no changes, and now it's going to go to the governor, and I would be shocked if the governor vetoed this. I mean, because it's, it's such a good bill for the towns.
Well, there's one thing, though. I haven't followed every detail of this bill because, as you stated, I mean, how many bills go through the session, and you have to prioritize some bills or-
About eighteen hundred this year, which is crazy.
Do you have any idea how many of those have been ITL'd?
A lot of them.
Okay. Uh, but, no, getting back to two eighty-two, the-
Uh, three eighty-two, yeah.
Yeah, three eighty-two, I'm sorry. Concern that I have, and again, the board, we haven't discussed this, but in the research that I did in the couple of hours that I had this afternoon on that, one of the concerns that I have with that, I understand the fact that by not having to put a fence around the cemetery, that the town saves money. But one of the concerns that I have is because when they talk about here, when you read it, it says, "Maintenance of deserted burial grounds and cemeteries which have been declared abandoned in accordance with RSA two eighty-nine colon nineteen dash twenty-one."
Yes.
Okay? But, so, if you don't have to put a fence around your cemeteries, there's no way that you're going to be able to control people are going through the cemeteries with ATVs, four-wheelers. I mean, statute doesn't allow it, but without a fence that you can, and, you know, briefly, I could, I haven't had a chance to discuss this with the chief, but I know that if that was happening, let's say up on Shirley Hill, okay? Where you do have a lot of four-wheelers going through, and somebody called, they would call up, most likely call up the police. But then you have the semit, trustees of the cemetery that are in charge of the cemetery. The police would have to go out there. They'd have to investigate that, and it, it just raises an issue of how much time and effort the police need to do in research to find out four-wheelers that are going through a cemetery. And we have enough, uh, problems repairing broken headstones. As it is, we can't keep up. I mean, you get headstones from the seventeen hundreds that could get damaged. That's just a concern, and the other concern is, is I'm thinking of the Valley Street Cemetery in Manchester. If Manchester didn't have to have a fence around that cemetery on Valley Street, because the Valley Street Cemetery- because the Valley Street Cemetery is, is an issue, so that, that it's just a concern of, of the resources, the unintended consequence that you don't have to spend to put a fence around a cemetery, but how much more you're spending in maintenance of that cemetery and other things that happen because you don't happen, happen to have a fence around it.
Well, with this bill, what this, you know, and I probably should have read what the bill does for the audience, the House Bill three eighty-two. This bill removes the requirement that municipalities maintain a significant, and that's an important word, fence in gates surrounding municipal public cemeteries.
I understand, but what's the definition of significance? Is it three quarters, is it one, is it two-thirds?
Well, this is enabling. You know, you can still put a ten-foot barbed wire fence around if you want to, or you can put a smaller fence to keep four-wheelers or whoever out of, you know, there's no have to. And, and I know, you know, I heard a lot of testimony where towns were supporting this because it, for again, it's enabling. You know, we can still put fences, you know, like Valley Street, like you explained, they have to have a fence around that. I can't imagine them not putting a fence around there. And they have to maintain that fence because I think it's just good policy. But there are some cemeteries out in the middle of the boonies where the fences are falling down and the towns are like, you know what, we just don't wanna keep maintaining this. It's not an issue for people going over there doing damage.
I, I have another one here that I don't know if you're familiar with, House Bill thirteen forty-one.
Thirteen forty-one? Was it in my committee?
Criminal justice and public safety.
HB thirteen forty-one?
Yes.
You'd have to read the head and
Repealing the provision relative to the unauthorized use of firearms in the compact part of a city or a town. What this does is allows anybody to discharge a firearm in a public park in any part of the compact area.
I'd have to, I've, I've seen that, I haven't seen the bill. I would wanna read more before I made a comment on that. I don't think we should be disarming, I mean, firing our guns in, in public parks. But with that said, I would definitely wanna read the bill and study it a little. Because I am a huge firearms, a second amendment, I guess is the correct word.
Yeah, well, this bill would repeal an existing statute, RSA six forty-four colon thirteen that requires local approach of, of that type of activity. That it prohibits the discharge of any cannon, gun, pistol, or other firearm in any compact part of a city or a town except with the written permission of the police chief or the governing body. The statute defines a compact part of a municipality as an area comprising, A, any non-residential commercial buildings plus a perimeter three hundred feet wide around such buildings, B, any park, playground, or other outdoor public gathering place designated by the local governing body, or C, six or more contiguous dwellings where each dwelling is within three hundred feet of at least one of the others plus a perimeter, it goes on with that. But it's a bill that I know the Police Chief Association is opposed to.
Yeah.
I haven't had time, I, I have briefly discussed this with the chief and I am the Selectman Rep to the Police Department. And I have concerns about it and the board has not discussed it as a ward at this time, but we may take it up at some point.
Yeah. But I think, if I recall right, the chief was also against Senate Bill eighty-eight that did pass. You know, not to speak for the chief, but I believe he's against most gun bills that come forward out of the House.
Well, I'm not discussing that bill, I'm discussing this bill because as a selectman of town of Gophstown, I have a concern about it for safety of the citizens and, and the limited resources that we have to deal with things.
Now, where is that bill? I mean, is it in committee right now?
This bill is going to the floor to be voted on March seventh.
And what's the committee recommendation?
I believe that ought to pass.
Really? Okay. I guess I have to read up on it.
Please do. As a matter of fact, I can give you this here, which is the general status on the bill if you want it.
Yeah, I can look it up when I get home, but it's thirteen forty-one.
Thirteen forty-one.
Yeah.
Yep. It's in criminal justice and public safety, report's been filed, status date, and floor date is, bless you, floor date is March seventh.
Yeah. No, I think I've heard, I think I read an article or, or saw something in the newspaper about, you know, there are fears of people, you know, shooting guns in parks.
Yeah, ought to pass.
Well, if it's, do you know the, you know, the number? Did it, does it say? You know, what the voted number was out of committee? You know, sixteen to three or?
I don't have that in front of me.
Okay.
I had looked up some of the stuff, but like I said, I only had, found out what, what it was that you wanted to, to discuss.
Yes.
You know, I, I had to get some background on that.
No, but I, I do appreciate you guys listening to me. You know, because I think it is important as you, I can't remember who brought it up about communications. You know, I think you guys should have us in here occasionally to talk to us and
We, we do, and unfortunately, we, we do have the invitation and I know when we do invite the state reps, we only get maybe about three or four.
Yeah, I've been every time. I, what I wanna do is, I, I know Senator De La Sandro comes occasionally and I think I would like to start doing that as long as I am the state rep. Just to touch base on some of the good bills that are coming forward, because there are good bills up in that House.
Yeah. Just, I recognize, but I just, in response to that, the only it's, it's not in what we've tried to do in the past, we've tried to do it with the state reps as a group. Part of it is, is that the amount of state reps, and if you, we only have one senator, but we have eight state reps.
Yeah.
And if we have eight state reps coming individually, it's not to be disrespectful or anything, but
Well.
just, if we gave you an hour a month perhaps, I'm just
Or even just a half hour or fifteen minutes, yeah.
A month. We have to extend that courtesy eight times.
I, I would agree with that, if the others requested it, I would respect that decision, but until then, if they're now gonna come, I think I should be here in front of you.
I'm not saying that, I'm not asking you, that's not what I'm saying, I'm just trying to, that's the rationale on the board why we've had meetings with all the state reps, because there were eight. And it would be nice to get all of you together so we have one discuss, we've had it with the retirement issues, different issues, so that we all have that discussion and our eight reps could hear it from the five, the full board that, that way at, at one time on that, so it's, nothing meant disrespectful, it's just
None taken.
You know, I mean, anybody's welcome to, you know, get on the agenda, the board of selectmen, that's what we I wanna make sure is that I don't have eight people coming requesting a half hour every month.
Absolutely. And, and I would respect that because I know how valuable your time is. So I can't imagine you guys putting up with eight of us every month.
You know, one of the things that I was involved in years ago, and you were some of, I think I know you were, because you were in the board way back, but we had a joint session with the school board, the board of selectmen, and our state reps, and not, not all the state reps went, but we did that like once a year. And we were able to talk about, it was usually at the media center and we talked about the issues, and that was a nice exchange of, of information. We don't all agree on all the issues, but it's good for everybody to hear each other's opinions, so I think that's a good thing to do. The other thing that I don't object to, Mr. Chairman, is, you know, if, if we, if our state reps want to nominate one of the reps to fill us in on things and, and John happens to be that person and they all agree that he's gonna be the one to act as a liaison with our board, I'm good with that too, the more information that we can get and or to have a conduit of communication, I'm good. And I think that's something that typically state reps who, who represent a particular town, sometimes they do that, they, they say, okay, Representative Burt is gonna be the liaison, and, and maybe another state rep might be the liaison to the school board or something, and then that, that could work. I, I wanna thank you, Representative Burt, for, for coming and explaining your position. Like, from my, my perspective with respect to, when Representative Heikal's here, with respect to confusion as to sponsor, and I can't speak for, for, for Steve Forn here, but we thought exactly what you stated, was that if you're the prime sponsor, you support it, and then even if you sign on as a co-sponsor, you're gonna be kinda shepherding that bill or helping get that bill, get passed. Kinda made sense, and everything that you said made sense to me as to what I thought the process was. So I appreciate, I appreciate that. I guess, just one question that I have, and I guess it's, it applies to all of us as well, is that sometimes we go in to something, an issue with our own opinion, and after hearing testimony or after getting all the opinions from different people, we recognize that we represent a constituency, we don't represent our own opinion sometimes, and we have to sometimes vote against our, what our judgment is, or what our personal feelings are. And that's all I would request, is that that you, as well of all of our reps, are held to that similar standard, that there may be situations where you feel personally about a particular piece of legislation, but the constituents are like, no way, Jose, and, and that you would vote in the interests and, and of, of the constituents, so I mean, I, I obviously, there was, you were a part of many, many different bills this session, some I, I, I agree with, some I don't agree with, but I appreciate you coming.
Yeah. Well, and that's what's nice about the House, is that we don't agree every time. You know, I agreed with my committee seventy percent of the time with the recommendation, and thirty percent I didn't. You know, I think that's pretty good odds, and the times I didn't, you know, I wasn't alone on all of them.
The, the one thing, and, and, you know, I, I know that I, a couple people poke fun at me several months ago, as I, I said that there was a lot of outrageous bills, whatever, and I'm glad to hear that you said that there are with eighteen hundred, it's kinda crazy. Because there's a cost to that, I mean, it's, you know, there's a lot of ta, a lot of business to tackle that's important to the state and to local communities. And with eighteen hundred bills, of which the vast majority of them are, are deemed in expedient to legislate, it sucks up the energy and the time at, you know, for you as representatives. And, you know, when I look through that, I looked through this and, and yours was kinda typical in terms of the bills that you either sponsored or, or, or co-sponsored. But I would love to hear from Representative Warden. I would love for him to, to, to come here, because there are several bills that, I think he sponsored close to forty-five different bills, and a lot of them got ITL'd at two to three thousand dollars a pop, I mean, that's costing everybody a ton of money. And I do have concerns about, you know, bills which legalize marijuana, you know, there's some, there are some gun control bills that I do have, have issues with, so I, I'm gonna reach, I'm gonna take your advice, I'm gonna reach out to you and the other reps and, and, and share those, this is not the forum for that, but I will, I will certainly, you know, be in touch with you and Representative Warden and Heikal and all the others on those things.
Yeah. Well, I know on the, if I can be real quick, you know, with the marijuana, I know there's a, a huge push to decriminalize it, I'm not a supporter of that. You know, I would, you know, or unless I saw something that, you know, really changed my mind, I will vote no for that anyways, but but what they're looking at, not to speak for them, but you know, some of the representatives that asked me for their vote, you know, for the vote of yes, which I said, no, I can't, I'm gonna vote no on this, is they're saying that it would lower cost in our criminal systems and et cetera. But I don't know what it would do on the social issues, you know, once that's out there, you know, I, I just, you know. But, you know, some of the bills, and, and to say that each one of them's two thousand dollars, I, I don't know what the cost is.
Yeah, we had asked on that, yeah.
Is that what it was? Yeah.
Depends on how many committees, you know, how many times it has to go into a committee and have a public hearing. You know, but the average bill is about two thousand dollars because it has to go through, you know, was it legal services?
Yes.
Goes through the legal services, it looks through that, and, you know, eighteen hundred, I mean, that's a lot of money, that could be some money that could be sent back to the towns and cities.
Yeah, but would they cut any staff if we didn't have, you know, if we had seventeen hundred bills or thirteen hundred bills? I don't know, I mean, because that's where the money would be and
You know, the, the other, the other thing that I guess for communication that I would ask, and I guess we should ask that of all our reps, not, not exclusively you, but, you know, if you sponsor a bill or co, just can you let the boards know? I mean, obviously you have your opinion, and we have to completely respect that.
I could
But when I look at, not your bills, I'm, I just looked through a handful of them that were sponsored by reps from Gophstown, whether it would be a bill that the police chief may have objections to, or the fire chief, or the conservation commission, because there were some bills that had to deal with wetlands, and I know that some of them were upset about that. And sometime, whether it be the cemetery trustees on the fence issue, at least it gets that discussion going.
Yes.
Because sometimes, you know, you go into it, and, and we do that all the time, I mean, here we go, we have this whole zip code issue. And we're gonna have a lot, we're having a public meeting, we're gonna, we're gonna hear on that issue, good, bad, or indifferent. And I think that's a healthy thing, so if you could just let us know the bills that you sponsor or co-sponsor, that you feel, you know, and, and then allow us that opportunity to weigh in, that would be very helpful.
Yeah. And, and on the eighteen hundred bills that just popped in my head, you know, I looked at some of those bills, like one of them last year was to force clotheslines everywheres. It, it, so condos have a law now, or a rule, it's a rule. There's no clotheslines, well, this was gonna force them to put a clothesline up.
With a vegetable garden.
Or the vegetable garden. It was like similar to my EZ Pass, the bill's dead. And I support the kill of the bill, you know, because the mission was accomplished. I don't wanna take, even though it's eighteen hundred bills and we scratch our heads going, what is this? It came from a constituent, it came from a voter, and I don't wanna tell any voter, if they come to me, and I support the bill, you know, would you put this in for me? Well, no, we already got eighteen hundred bills. You know, I, I wouldn't wanna do that because that voter means something, and it's his idea. You know, so it should be heard, even though if the committee agrees with it or not, and then the House agrees with it. But with the, you know, with that many bills, it, it is, it's a lot of work. And it's, it's a tremendous amount of
If you guys had a town manager up there, it would be that gets him going.
Is Sue looking for a new job?
No, it's that town administrator versus town manager.
Yeah.
Yeah. It spills blood pressure down.
No, I don't have any blood pressure left.
But no, it's a lot of fun being up there. You know, we see a lot of weird bills, but we see a lot of good bills.
Well, I wanna, I wanna thank you, Representative Burt, for coming in, spending your time with us, and, you know.
I, I appreciate you allowing me this amount of time, especially on your busy nights. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day now. Thanks again. Okay, moving on. Next item on our agenda is acceptance of donations. We have miscellaneous firearm property valued at fifteen hundred and six dollars and sixty-nine cents. You sure it's not sixty-seven? Just kidding.
It's not necessarily firearms equipment, as they did in the agenda, it's these equipment, bell keepers, handcuff cases, things of that sort. Joe Marquis, the proprietor of Legends Firearms, came in with several boxes of stuff he didn't think he could sell and offered to give them to the police department. At this point, we're holding on to them until we get approval from the board. But the vast majority of the stuff we can use without question.
We have that list, they have the list, whole list in the packet.
I'll make a motion to accept with gratitude the firearm property valued at fifteen hundred, six dollars and sixty-nine cents from Joe Marquis, proprietor of Legends Firearms.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just that we send a
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hold those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll do that, we'll send a letter.
From, from the chief or from the board?
From the board. From the board.
From the board?
Yeah. Okay. And our next item. We have a accepted donation of a hundred and fifty dollars from the Gophstown Police Association for the Grassmere Statue Fund.
Motion to accept. Second.
Any discussion?
Same, just a
Yeah, same. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So there'll be a couple letters for us to sign? Yes.
While we're on that subject and while the chief is here, there was, before us, there was the application for the replacement of the police association sign on, on Mast Road. And I'm not sure what the status of where that's And I'm not sure what the status of where that's at at the planning board process. But I, I was at a Parks and Recreation meeting, and there has been discussions at that commission about signs and a community sign. And one of the things, Chief, if you could reach out on behalf of Parks and Rec Commission, and speak to the association to see, what are they doing, if they do replace it with an LED sign? What are they, are they getting a trade-in on the old one? Because Parks and Rec is toying with the idea of trying to have a community sign where they can advertise their programs and things of that nature.
In other words, they want.
They could repurpose it or buy it.
They want to recycle the sign?
Recycle it, repurpose it, exactly.
Presently, it looks like, and I won't speak with the association, there's a new president. He's come on board, and he's looking at probably going with a repurposed sign versus that one. But that, so that's come up for the next.
Okay. So you're going to reuse what you have, or?
Possibly.
Okay.
It's got to go before the meeting, initially there was a vote to replace it.
Right.
And then there's a discussion because of the cost.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Next item is Public Works Director Carl Querem. And there's several items that you're going to be going over, which is roads, road striping specs, crack sealing specs, aggregate crushing bid specs.
All that fun stuff.
Travel requests.
Fun stuff.
I just, I didn't want to mix everything up, we're just keeping with specs for right now.
Thank you very much. 'Tis the season. What you have before you are several of the specs that we put out every year. The first one, I think, is the, the road striping. There's really no change to this, other than we had to change the reference to the state DOT spec to get it to the correct chapter and verse, but other than that, it's the same as what we put out every year. I don't know if you want to deal with these one at a time, or you want me to just kind of go through the.
Well, while you're on that, first, well, wait a minute. Before we get on this one, I just had one thing that I wanted to bring up with the, with the striping. And I brought this up, I mean, you know, we've discussed this, and I understand finances is, is a restriction, is a concern. But we generally stripe what time of the year?
Generally, we try to do it right after the street sweeping. That's what we try to do.
Right, we try.
Yeah.
But when does it usually get done?
Well, again, the other factors we look at is how many of the striped roads are on the overlay list? Does it make sense to put it off? This isn't a vendor that comes in and does street by street, you know, that comes to town and literally paint the whole town in one night. So if there's a significant number of striped roads that are on the overlay list, we would try to get those roads done early in the season, so that we can get striped, you know, after they're paved and not have to mobilize the paint vendor back.
Right, I guess, but the concern that I have, and I don't know about all the streets because I don't go around checking out all the streets, but driving around this time of the year, you know, this year hasn't been so bad, but in, in the spring, after the winter, that's when the abrasiveness of sand and salt deteriorates the markings on the road. And you get to roads such as Daniel Plummer, when you're going down Daniel Plummer, you get to Mast Road, you can only even know that there's a left turn lane there by the light.
Right.
You have no indication of where you are, when people make the turn, whether you're over. So that, that's an issue, and, you know, we've discussed that. And I understand this year with the issues in Pinnardville and the, the center lane. But regardless of the fact of all the construction that's been down there, we have the same issue with the center lane and the turning arrows, and people don't realize they got through the three lanes in there. And I just don't know how other, other towns deal with it, and I don't know if that's something that perhaps on a certain case basis, maybe there's something that could be addressed with it. I'm just bringing it up.
Is it possible to include the striping as part of the reclamation or the overlays, so that we can do the townwide striping when sweeping's done? Then all those other roads that should get resurfaced, they get striped when they're done, so that we're not holding up one for the other?
You know, it's a balancing act. We do that a lot. I mean, there are a lot of occasions if we only have one or two roads. We don't make it part of the contract, because our price is much, much better than, you know, say, John Neville was the contractor, somebody comes, "Strike the road." So what we'll do in that case is we end up paying a mobilization charge to have the contractor come back, you know, a second time, but it still works out better to have us do it. In some things, like Mast Road, I mean, that would have been like, I have $4,000 or $6,000 to paint Mast Road, you know, because there's a lot there.
I, I understand, okay, but I guess where I'm coming from is East on Barton Road, for example, what was paved out in front of my house. The road got paved, they went out and they put those little plastic things in the middle. Road never got striped.
Yeah.
I would rather see Pinnardville be striped than East on Barton Road be striped.
Right, right. You know, it all comes down to money, and.
And that's what I said.
You know, if the board, if there's a street that, geez, we really ought to stripe this, as long as you understand that, okay, the budget line's going to be exceeded by a couple thousand dollars, I'm okay with that, but that really is all it takes, is a phone call and money. And they can come back and take care of whatever we need them to take care of.
Well, I, I understand, but I guess kind of what Nick is saying, if there's certain, like I said, I didn't go, I don't go around checking all the streets, but there seemed to me that some areas should be because of the volume of traffic.
Yeah.
The turning radius, such as Daniel Plummer and Mast Road, for example, those high-volume areas. Is there, and, and I'm not saying, I'm not sitting here and saying that I want to spend more money out of the budget for it, but if there's a possible way that we could look, perhaps there's some innovative way, or there's something, even if it's a little, couple of extra thousand dollars for some of those, possibly that we look in and the, the high-traffic areas.
Well, one, one thing we could do is right up front in this RFP is just add a task that we would do.
As an alternate, perhaps, or something along that line.
Basically, what you're paying for, and what they would need to know is, we want you to mobilize twice. Build any enterprise that you're going to mobilize twice. That's all we would need to do, is say that, because what they come in, they look at the miles that we have, they know how much they can do in a night, they come in one night and they do double yellow, they come back the next night, they do white, they're out of town, two nights, they can plan, and we pay so much a linear foot. If, if we said going in that, hey, based on the workload that we have, we need you to mobilize twice or three times throughout the season, they would just bid accordingly. So that's a fairly easy fix, if we want to, you know, if that's a real concern. Now, the type of equipment that they bring, if, if our intention is, we just want you to do a couple of critical intersections, I would break that out as a separate item, because I don't want to pay, you know, a big thing per linear foot for them to come do a small area, you know, because they're going to just charge more for that.
Well, I guess that's kind of what, where, what I was, my thinking was. And I'm just naming that one intersection, because I travel at intersection, and it's something, you, you're pulling up towards a light, I know there's three. There's a right, there's a left turn lane, there's a right turn lane there from when, when the gas station went in. I know that, because I was part of, I was on the planning board, that was part of the site plan.
Yeah.
You drive up there, you have no clue what's there.
Right. So is that the board's desire to add something now, or you want me to try to get through this season and see how we can make it work?
Let's discuss it a bit further. If, if 80% of your 51 miles or so, if they were done under one, as quickly as possible when the sweeping is done, but then you have a significant other portion, let's just call it 20%, that has to be delayed till further in the summer, because we've got a lot of overlay in all of Mast Road and Pinnardville. Is that, that would be a second mobilization for both yellow and white, another two-night session.
Right. Well, yeah, it wouldn't be all night, but yes, they'd come twice.
They, wouldn't do it all, could they do it all in one night if it was a smaller job?
Yeah, they, they, well, right now, they do it all in one night. You, you mean, white and yellow?
Yes, let's say there was 90, 90% of this was done early in the season, the other 10% was done later, because you have roads that have to be paved first. We're not certain when all that paving is going to get done.
Right. They, they, they could not do both colors in one night.
Right, okay, that's what I was driving at.
The truck is set up for a color.
Could we bid it both ways, doing it all at once, and then bid it with two mobilizations to see the difference in cost?
Well, I guess the only thing is, is I don't know what we would have for the one, you know, to Carl's, answer Carl, I don't know what intersections or what it is. I'd have to leave that up to him, because I only know that, I'm only talking about that one particular intersection.
If, what we, what we could do is put this out, as we always do. Whoever the successful vendor is, work with them, knowing that we may pay an additional mobilization charge here and there, but it would give us a chance to get our hands around, how much quantity are we typically looking at? Because like I said, we have done it, you know, when, when we've done projects on Mast Road, we got to stripe Mast Road, whether we already striped town or not, you just got to stripe Mast Road. So you just suck it up and find the money and do it. You know, and that's kind of typically how we do, how we do it. If, if we know we have a lot of roads, we'll kind of try to hold off striping and, you know, be as efficient as we can with the money. But it's a balancing act, but I, I mean, I'm happy to do it either way. I can build something into this to try to address it, or we could just try to address it with a successful vendor and see what kind of a hit we take doing it that way.
Well, I suggest if the board's okay with it, take that recommendation of yours, see what you can do with this one. In the meantime, that would give you this, this season to come up with maybe some intersections or sections of road that are prone to the wear, so that that need to be done. And if it's not successful this year, perhaps you can develop something for the next time it goes out. Is that okay? I mean, does that sound reasonable?
And, and this is just for the yellow and white lines? This is not arrows or pedestrian crossings or anything parking?
Generally, we do the.
We do those in-house.
And the yield and that, right.
Yeah, and, and, you know, we've toyed with, like this year, we dread, because we're going to have to do Mast Road when, when that gets all overlaid. But the problem is, is that, you know, we have specific templates.
Right.
So if you bring a contractor in that does not have those exact templates, then you have to repaint it the following year, you end up.
They don't line up right.
Yeah.
And they look like who did it and ran.
Planning into our schedule, we're going to have more striping to do because of.
Right. Scott?
While we're on that topic, do we have the paving scheduled for Mast Road in terms of dates?
No. We, we know it will be.
Rough a month.
July, August, when school is out and the temperatures are at their highest, because we're going to do a thin one-inch overlay.
Okay, and when, and when I say we, it's real, this is a sewer commission job, of which you are the GC.
GC.
Um, is, when do we plan on letting the business owners know what's going on? And are we talking nighttime paving?
Probably not, because Mast Road has three lanes, so we can work the two lanes of traffic through the work zone. So we don't generally have a problem paving Mast Road. We will probably let the businesses know, the sewer commission still needs to negotiate it out of Cardillo's contract, which has not happened yet. Everybody's moving forward.
The repaving is in his contract, and they have to negotiate it.
I understand that, but, okay. What have we been doing for the last four months when we put this thing off?
Sewer commission.
Well, and we're, and they're working on it, we're working on it, we're moving ahead.
There's also some other work left to be done by Cardillo.
Well, it's a punch list, it's the same thing we went through with the.
Scott? All right. I'm not playing this game again. So I will, I'm going to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen send a letter to the Sewer Commission regarding this issue, when, we're, we're asking them to come before the Board of Selectmen, because we're the ones who get the ire of the community, not the Sewer Commission. And there, I mean, I think many people were upset that this project has gone now three seasons. There's, it, there is no doubt, when you go down Mast Road, you see a lot of empty storefronts. So it is impacting the businesses there. There is no more jerking around here. So I'm a little bit upset to hear that we haven't negotiated it out when.
Well, who's the "we"?
Well, not "we," the Sewer Commission has not negotiated out. But ultimately, it's a reflection upon us, the board, even though we have nothing to do with it. So the only thing that we can do that's in our power is to express our grave concerns with the Sewer Commission, and ask them to either come before us, or send them a letter, so that when people's, and, and let the community know, hey, you might want to go to a Sewer Commission meeting and ask them about this, because this is not our job. And again, I'm not placing any blame on the Sewer, I don't know what the circumstances are. And Selectman Pierce, if you want to, you know, chime in and let us know what's going on, but.
I was going to make a suggestion, since he is our rep to the Sewer Commission. I don't know, when is the next time they're meeting? And to see if he has what his, his feeling of this is, is it something that we should burden him with going there to make the case?
Well, the other thing, if I may interrupt for a second, is that we're having a meeting regarding the Pinnardville zip code?
Yeah.
Then, then let's bring it up there, because there'll be plenty of people from Pinnardville who this is going to impact.
I don't want to mix the two issues, that's separate.
Then hand out a flyer, I'm, I'm just serious, this has been three years.
No, because if you start taking what's intended for one thing, and you start injecting something else, you're opening the door up for other discussions. Nick?
Just along those lines, they are in, they are already intermixed. I've, I've talked with a great many business owners on Mast Road, and they are fearful for this coming year, after what happened to their business, or what they perceived happening to their business, and I'm sure they, they lost business this past year. The prospect of paving coming up, the potential cost of changing their zip code, they are truly fearful for this upcoming year. So we may not want it to be intermixed, but those items are all together on the minds of the business owners in the, in the Pinnardville area.
Carl, if I may, when, I asked about nighttime paving, simply because, oh, well, the road is kind of wide and we, yeah, but you know what, any traffic disruption, any, is, is impacting these businesses. And personally, the Sewer Commission should be reaching out to the business owners to say, "What do you prefer?" Because if they prefer nighttime paving, and it's less impact on them, then that's the route that we should be going. These folks have suffered for like two, three years now.
Name of the car?
Hey, Dave, I just.
Go ahead, Dave.
Once the paving commences, July or August, what's the time on site?
Well, intermittently for a couple of weeks, because what.
This is, this is not a whole summer project.
Oh, no, no, no.
It's a two-week project.
There's, there's over 100 manholes. You know, what, what has to happen is curbing the entire length of Mast Road almost. So there has to be milling and crowning, so shimming and milling that has to happen to shape the subgrade. All of the structures, probably before that occurs, will have to be dropped. Get out of the way so the miller can shape the road. Then somebody has to come back, there's like 120 manholes that have to come up to grade once the base grade is established, and then the final paving will come in. The paving itself, you're talking a couple of days' worth of milling and shimming, couple of days' worth of the final paving, but it's that touching all those manholes before and after, and the prep work that's going to.
Can that occur at night?
You know, jackhammers and, and pavement saws and all that stuff, it can. And, you know, I, I'll let the Sewer Commission speak for themselves, but I, I just don't want to leave the viewers with a, a flavor that they're, I've sat in on their meetings, they're very sensitive to the businesses, they're very sensitive to the, the burden they've placed down there. They have made it clear to Public Works, we want this done, we want it done smoothly, we want it done quickly. We want a good finished product.
They're committed to curb to curb.
They're biting off the curb to curb, because they feel like the community down there has suffered enough, and let's just do this and do it right. So they have this contractual issue that they're struggling to get through. I'm trying to help them as best I can, and it still needs to happen. We just had a conversation the other day about it. And, you know, as far as reaching out to the businesses, they, they've got a monthly newsletter that it's kind of shut down for the winter right now, because there's nothing going on. But every month, they're reaching out to the businesses with a newsletter. So I, I just feel like that they are trying to reach out and do those things. None of us wanted this to go three seasons, but as Cardillo will tell you, it was the town of Goffstown that stopped them, because Cardillo wanted to be done with it last fall, and we just didn't want them paving one of the main thoroughfares in town. Because Cardillo wanted to be done with it last fall, and we just didn't want them paving one of the main thoroughfares in town out of season and out of spec. And us have a crappy product at the end of the day, and that's why it's going into the third season. So I, I kind of feel responsible for that, because I kind of threw a wrench at them, you know, at the end of the season. But I, I really do think if the community can be a little more patient with us, we're gonna end up with a very nice, the main commercial area of town is gonna look real nice when we're done.
Well, Carl, don't you know that when you make that kind of a recommendation to the Board, that's the year that you're gonna have the milddest winter?
Yeah, 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 exactly.
Dave, Scott?
No, I just, like I said, I just wanna make sure that we as a Board, you know, dot our, dot our i's and cross our t's on this. Even though it's not our project per se, people do come to us. And I, like Nick said, I've gotten phone calls, um, from business owners over the last couple of weeks with respect to the zip code issue, the bus, you know, the fact that their business has suffered because of construction. They are, whether we like it or not, they are intertwined, because they look at, how will this impact my business? And, um, whatever we can do to mitigate any adverse impacts, I'm in favor of. So.
Dave? It's okay with the Board. I, I will express those thoughts to the Sewer Commission Chair. And as much as they're able to expedite finishing of one contract and defining the next contract, so that we, we know it's gonna go forward, you know, well, a well-organized manner. When, when is your meeting? When is your next meeting?
I, I think they meet the first Tuesday. I'm not a hundred percent sure. Second Tuesday? So it'll probably be, well, that's Election Day.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Dave checking his calendar.
Dave checking his calendar here. I still have it on the evening of the Election Day, which obviously I'm not attending if it was. That's why I'm gonna go out of cycle to express these ideas to the Chair of the Sewer Commission.
Well, yeah, and, and also, I don't, I don't mind sending an email to that last meeting, because we, we had a meeting a week or two ago and I had these conversations.
As of today, it hasn't been rescheduled to a different date. Well, let, let me ask you this question. In, in light of the fact that it's scheduled for Election Day, perhaps, uh, some type of correspondence or a memo could be?
Something.
Something? I'll, I'll put that in my request. For them to define what their immediate plans are. Okay, is that, is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, Nick?
Just wanna keep this on the radar.
Yeah, no, no, no. Okay, good. Thank you, thank you.
Did, did you guys act on the motion for the striping?
I thought Phil's, I thought Phil recapped what, I was okay with what you had recapped.
So go, go forward as it is, but work with the vendor.
Right, do we need a motion though for the bid specs?
Yes.
Okay, so, yeah, so moved on that? Second. Okay, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous, four zero.
The crack sealing bids, I did put together a bid spec, um, and we did meet with the vendor that we, we had last year. Uh, and I'm pretty sure the Board is aware. There are several roads that we did right at the end when it was just too cold, too wet. For instance, Town Hall parking lot in South Mass, um, but other roads that they, kind of did in the same timeframe. The vendor is at no cost to the town, planning on coming back as soon as spring allows, when temperatures allow, um, and redoing those roads. We made some significant changes to the crack sealing spec to address those concerns, so that they can't happen again, such as temperature requirements similar to what we have for asphalt. You know, it's gonna be dry, it'll be fifty degrees and rising, yada, yada, yada. We always had a date in there, but now we've added weather conditions as well. However, in talking to the, the vendor who literally walked every road in town, um, last year, he, he made the recommendation to, to me, and, you know, at first, I'm kind of a stubborn Yankee and I've got this crack sealing plan where, you know, every year, by God, we're gonna, we're gonna crack seal all our roads. But he says, you know, you're really, he says, I'll, I'll bid on it and I'll come do whatever you want. But he says, the cost is not the material. The cost is, you've got this trucking, you know, trucks and crew and saw that are gonna walk every single mile of road, no matter how many cracks they're sealing, because they have to walk every mile of every road. He's, I'm telling you, we did everything there was last year, and with this mild winter, I don't think you're gonna have too many new cracks that opened up. So we did a little bit of driving around and looking around, and, you know, yeah, there's cracks here and there that, that opened up, but it's not a real significant amount. So I kind of took to heart the idea and, as a matter of fact, kind of thinking it through. Maybe we wanna just take a break this year. He's gonna do a, quite a few streets anyway in the spring at no cost to us. But then come up with a plan where we divide the community and we crack seal kind of half each, you know, do each year, but we don't cover the entire town, kind of rotate it around town, so that every road's getting it every other year. Because we, we have a pretty good, um, program and the roads are pretty well sealed. But it would give us a chance, do that for a year or two and see how it's holding up and how it's working out. It, it may be a little more cost-effective to do it that way. I, I can tell you, we by far have the most aggressive crack sealing program in the whole state, if not all, in New England. Which I'm pretty proud of, but by the same token, I'm not opposed to looking at whether there's a way to be a little more efficient with.
Your recommendation is forego the.
Just hold off on it this year. It's here in front of you, ready to go. If the Board doesn't agree, uh, very easy to just advertise it at this point. But, you know, after talking to the vendor at the end of last week and thinking about it, it's like, if it's a hundred thousand dollars, I could pave a couple more roads. And it kind of made sense to me, so.
Sounds, sounds, sounds like a plan to me. Okay? Appreciate you following up with the vendor from last, late last season, that he's coming back at no charge to redo a few roads.
I got a road for you.
Yeah, do, and let me know if there are roads.
Yeah, Horizon, was it Horizon?
Range Road.
Range Road.
We can go right after her, yeah. New teeth.
Isn't that the road that you asked us to pick off the list?
No.
Carl, if you remember, it was a little bit of the road. In front of my house.
Okay, so we're gonna take, the Department has recommendation, we're gonna go for, we're gonna forego crack sealing bid this year?
Yeah.
Okay, and we're, a way to report on you next year to see if you need to double it.
Yes.
Aggregate crushing.
Um, the aggregate crushing is, again, it's the same basic spec that we've, um, used in the past. We dropped our quantity a little, just because we don't have the feedstock that we had in years past. We've kind of used it all up. We talked about, but we, we don't have enough information yet to put it in this bid spec. But we talked about whether or not we could, um, engage this person to help us prepare some of the material that's left over in the, the old Perry pit. We have some corners of that, that, that could be processed.
Mean, is rock there?
Yeah, there's a couple pockets where we think there's enough rock, and we're, we're gonna get some sieve analysis done to, to figure out how good the material would be. But I just don't know enough about it yet. So what I'll probably do is put this out, so we can get going on it and be prepared for the construction season, but come back with a change order of some kind, um, once we have a vendor in place.
Your processing of twenty thousand tons is less than it has been in previous years?
Yeah, we usually do about thirty thousand.
Okay, so you want us to approve this one? Motion to proceed with the RFP for soliciting prices for aggregate recycling, crushing. Second. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, four zero. Next item is out-of-town travel?
Yeah, uh, I was invited to take part in a, uh, it's, it, I think it's part of the Federal Highway Administration Everyday Counts Initiative, where they're trying to streamline all their processes. But they're offering, through the LTAP folks in Vermont, a, um, training on, on municipal leadership or municipal leaders in transportation. And it's completely paid for through a grant from Federal Highway, but myself and a few of my colleagues from New Hampshire, as well as some folks from Vermont, would be going up for a few days of training in Lebanon. And, you know, a lot of it is dealing with, um, and I, I think I gave you the backup email from Nancy Mayville, which is kind of as much as I knew about it. You know, but it's kind of a training in, in critical thinking, um, how to make change happen, um, dealing with conflict. You know, you get in big road projects and, um, you know, you're dealing with contract, the conflicts that come out of that. And then, of course, generational issues and, and melding the diverse roles of the various people involved. And, you know, we're, we're working through a CMAC and a TE project now, and, uh, you know, and each one of those projects, even though they're both in Gostown and they're both in Public Works, there's completely different teams at DOT involved in each of those projects, and each of those teams has slightly different ways that they approach the projects. And I think that's kind of what this is all about, is just trying to educate everybody on how to work better as a team. I did get another email just today with a little more detail about the class, and looking at, I, what I didn't know before is who else would be there and looking at, uh, which of my colleagues would be joining me up there. I think it stands to be a really good, um, training, where they're gonna get a lot of good feedback, because the, the folks that are gonna be there are from all around, geographically all around the state. And, uh, I think it's gonna be a worthwhile thing to do.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it. Anybody have a?
Motion to approve the out-of-town travel request.
Yes, second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous, four zero.
The next thing I got, and I did get a follow-up email after your packets were done, but I, I, I got an email from CEI, which, um, they're basically a consultant that has done a lot of work with EPA on the stormwater permits. And, you know, as you, as you probably know, the stormwater permit's been in limbo for the last couple of years. And so I got this email last week, kind of made it sound like the permit's coming out any minute now and heads up. So I did contact the folks at EPA to get a, right from a horse's mouth, status update. And, um, the email that I got, um, late Friday was that the New Hampshire permit's still in draft and they're working with Regional Council and Enforcement on wording of the final permit in response to comments, which has been the status for the last couple of years. And it says imminent, no. But I would say early, say late, early spring, and then dot, 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 this year. The information provided by CEI is actually pretty accurate. So I'm not seeing that, you know, they're coming running into town on horses and they're gonna enforce it, but, you know, it's still hanging out there.
It would certainly be a grace period for any, uh, response or implementation of new guidelines.
You would think.
Yes. Especially if it took them that long to put them together.
You would think.
So this is just informational at this point? That's all it is? Yeah, that's, okay. And you have one more item?
Yeah, the last item, the Board last, I believe it was last, early last fall or sometime, the Highway Safety Committee, working with the folks at the YMCA, uh, came in with a recommendation for some flashing warning beacons for the entrance to the Y. And, uh, at the time, I think Highway Safety, everybody was kind of looking at what we did on Wallace and Shirley and Wallace and Norman and saying, you know, that's the solution out there. After it was approved, you know, we started really questioning what was the problems we were having out there. So fell through the cracks, nothing was done. The Y now has brought it back to our attention and said, hey, we really gotta get this done. So we've been trying to work with them to, to, um, go through with that installation. However, I'm still not keen on the solar, you know, the solar-powered flashing lights. So we, we met with the folks at the Y and the police chief and I, and we looked at it. And they have a sign, you know, their sign right in front has power, has lights. And we talked about what they'd be willing to fund as far as optional things that might just work better for everybody. And they're basically willing to do anything. You know, they kind of have a little budget based on our estimates from what we were gonna do before. They just wanna move forward and get it done. So the one option that we looked at that seemed to make, from a maintenance perspective, a lot more sense, was what if we just had a flashing yellow beacon and had standard warning signs, but there was a flashing yellow right, right there at the entrance, rather than the LED warning signs away from the intersection? So we got a quote on that. Turns out it's almost exactly the same price as the two solar LED signs. So the Y is very willing to move forward with it. It would come off of their power supply at their sign, so there'd be no power cost to the town. There'd be no, uh, long-term. So we actually avoid the maintenance cost of the solar system, um, and we would just be maintaining a, a yellow flashing beacon.
Question I have on it, Carl. Uh, the type of lights that this would be, what's the peripheral range? And in other, and reason why I'm asking that, if you're driving down that road at nighttime, is it gonna light up, what's, what's the, the sideways, or is it just something that you're gonna see coming and, and the type? In other words, I know the old type where you had, they had the shields around them.
Yeah.
Then some of the LED type of lights or different, I'm, I'm not sure if it's LED or a different type of a light. It might be that, but it doesn't have that much of a, where, uh, the wash is on the side and illuminates the side of the road where it does nothing, but you basically see it as oncoming traffic. Is that?
I didn't get that specific with the vendor, but I, we could certainly.
Well, I think it is an issue.
Minimize the side, because I'm sure those, those two houses.
And, and, yeah, I think, I think in that area, it's not a area that's illuminated because there are streetlights, uh, because there are, are lights from parking lots or other areas. It's a rural area outside of the Y, basically.
Right.
And, you know, in the daytime, I don't think it's an issue, but when it starts getting nighttime.
Yeah.
And I would hate to be, uh, sitting in my living room and having the, my whole, everything being, you know, flashing lights all the time. Nick?
Just quickly, and I apologize, because I don't recall, um, the outcome. When, when Highway Safety came to us, did they propose a traffic, a yellow traffic light?
No, it was gonna be the yellow, the, it was gonna be yellow warning signs with the LED beacon on the warning sign, kind of just like we did up in, on Wallace Road.
You know, I'm just wondering if this, which, because there's really a significant difference, should go back to Highway Safety and have them look at, um, one versus the other. It's, it's really a little bit different than, a lot different than just a sign.
And I guess from a process perspective, I mean, no disrespect to you or the police chief, but you two met with, uh, and I know you're on both on Highway Safety, but then again, those folks didn't have that opportu, have you spoken to Highway Safety? The other members of Highway Safety or?
Um, no, not specifically.
And that's, so I, I think I would concur with, with Selectman Campasano that maybe they can call a meeting and just re-review it, because you, they approved something, and now there's been a departure from that. If I'm on Highway Safety, I'm like, why am I even on this committee? We approved this and then you're, you're in a later league.
But it all depends on what it was, the final outcome, because there are, sometimes they leave it up to Public Works to determine what's appropriate.
Was that the case or?
And I don't.
Well, I, I can tell you, it was Public Works that suggested the flat, you know, it was like, hey, it's a solution. We applied on Wallace, and everybody said, oh, that's a good idea. I don't, you know, roof, the people on Highway Safety are very versed, and I can tell you right now that if the Board would like to do that, I'm sure the chief could schedule a meeting real quick, would give me a chance to research the, how much we can shield the flashing beacon from the, the neighboring houses, and we could dispense it and get it back to you very fast, I would think.
Dave? And, uh, about the power coming from the private landowner, do we need, Sue, do we need an agreement with the town that they're willing to sup, forever supply power?
It wouldn't hurt.
Yeah, yeah, we can address it at the same time. I know the, the Y is very anxious to move this along, so I'm.
Well, it's either that or it goes back to the planning board, and I don't think they wanna go back to the planning board. If five years from now, a new manager comes in.
Yeah.
And they say, oh, we don't want the expense on our electric bill.
And they say, oh, we don't want the expense on our electric bill.
Or a new owner.
Yeah, I agree.
New owner, then running a line from wherever it's got to be run and on a new meter.
Yeah, yeah.
Nick, Nick?
And how does this fit with the Uniform Traffic Code? As far as, does it meet the requirements for a flashing light?
I will make sure it does. I, you know, we have them all over the place, so I honestly didn't think to go and see if that's changed, but I'll make sure that it meets M U C C.
Okay. Do we know what we're doing here?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, what are we doing?
Highway Safety Committee will reconvene and take this up and come back to the board.
And Carl's going to check about the side wash?
Yeah, side wash and. And I'll work on an agreement with the Y.
Okay.
Before you leave, I know that was your last item, Carl, but something came over today from Kathy for the bill of sale on the Holder tractor?
Yes, 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 yes.
Do you want to discuss that briefly?
Yeah. Twice now, we've gone out to bid to surplus our old Holder sidewalk tractor. We, Chadwick and Bayross, who we do a lot of business with on, you know, they do the vaccon and we rent excavators from them, buy a lot of stuff from them, recently became a Northland Holder dealer. So in discussions with them about the upcoming season, they brought up the Northland Holder. We kind of almost jokingly said, hey, you know, would you have a use for our old Holder and all the attachments? And they came and looked at it and they've offered us $8,000 for the unit as a credit. They said, we can just apply it as a credit to your account, we'll take the thing away. And so Sue and I, I came in to see Sue last week. We pulled out the purchasing policy and it fits in there as we've tried all the other kind of things. So it just basically came down to the finance director approving it and here's how it would work. So, you know, we had worked that out with Dawn and we were good to go. Northland Holder, however, needs a bill of sale, which involves more than myself and Dawn, that all you folks. Or at least we're assuming it does, because when we change over title or whatever we have to do to vehicles, you folks have to sign off on that. So that's what brings it back in here.
That was added to your signature folder for tonight.
I need to look at the signature folder.
Yeah, so, you know, with us, we just want to get the thing out of our yard. We've, you know, we've tried bidding it a couple of times. And the towns that have been interested, it's just been tough for them to pull together and come up with money to do it.
Because the same thing, it's the same type of a situation with us, when people say, well, why don't you look at buying a used truck?
Yeah. Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we authorize both administration and DPW to exercise the sale of the Holder tractor and, with respect to the bill of sale and other, you know, titling.
For the chairman to sign or do? Who's going to sign the bill of sale? I put it in the select.
Oh, I'll sign it. For the chair to sign.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, four zero.
Just for the record, Carl, I noticed on LGC's website under classifieds, there's a Holder tractor for sale for the town of Newport, a $2,000 senior's yours, right? For $8,000.
Oh, wow. Wow.
So we got to get there first.
We're not done with you.
Oh, we're not?
No.
Okay.
We aren't?
No, I'm not.
Oh.
Because, I may.
I guess you may.
No, because that has to do with Carl, Carl wasn't here when I, we talked about the road program. And I voted against it because I thought that it was the cart before the horse and can we, yeah, can we just have a discussion on, is that how we normally do it?
Well, what are you talking about? You, you, I'm not.
The paving, right? The paving did, two weeks ago.
We had a paving, right, a couple of weeks ago. Carl wasn't here, I remember he was sick or something and David did it. And since Carl is here, I just wanted to.
And you had a question that David couldn't answer.
Right, and that's why I voted against.
So it was all David's fault that you voted the way you did?
Please continue for time, I see her.
So it seemed as if, like typically, we get like the list of like roads later on, but then, you know, the RFP went out and it already listed pretty much all the roads that are getting done. We weren't, I wasn't sure, is that, are those, is that a definite list of all the roads that are being done? Or is that just kind of like an approximation of the square footage of what roads will be done? And then we reserve our right to change the roads down the road?
That doesn't, we reserve our right to change the roads, we reserve our right to reduce the number of roads based on what passes town meeting. Normally, you folks would see it kind of around the same time. But last year, well, last year, we didn't go out to bid.
Right, and we want, we want to do it earlier, right.
We want this out to bid earlier.
Right, so we can start.
That became a goal in life, to get it out to bid in February.
Okay.
I have not come.
And as a matter of fact, wasn't it Scott who was the one that was pushing for that?
No. So we hit the ground, no, because I was under the, I wasn't sure whether or not.
I don't know.
And this guy here couldn't get the job done.
If I couldn't, Scott's defense, though. We still could have had that discussion as far as what the proposed road plan would be at the same time.
Right.
Yeah, and you could, you could. As a matter of fact, I have a copy of it right here, if you want to see it, I'd be happy to give you copies of it. I don't generally bring that in here until after town meeting, when we know for sure here's what we got to work with. It'll be an interesting discussion to see how we would. As long as one of the roads isn't our.
I think, I think one of the, and I'll try to articulate this, and if this wasn't what some of the concern was, is how do you, if you specify certain roads and they go down and assuming they go down and they examine these roads and they, they make a bid based on this because of manholes, culverts and whatever that's on there, and now you go and you change those, okay? How is it possible that somebody could bid on something that I'm going to go, I'm going to look at this, but not knowing that that may not be what I'm going to do? And I guess that was.
Especially for traffic control, things of that nature. I mean, if you're saying that you're bidding out Mass Road, there's traffic control and yet you're doing like some back road that doesn't have any real traffic on it.
Or if you, if you go out and you're looking at a road that has three culverts and now you want me to do a road that's got eight culverts.
Well, keep in mind, this is our blanket paving and reg, this isn't specific. You know, roads that we're asking contractors to change the pipes and do, those have detailed plans and that's a whole different kettle of fish. This is, you know, we give you examples of the roads that we think we're going to do. They can go out and look at those roads. I think we understand, that's why Mass Road, we spelled out this many more manholes and this many more, because that's different. But whether they're doing East Unbotton Road or Montalona Road or Addison Road, it's really not that different. So, you know, and we've got, there's three paving contractors. We've worked with all three of them, they've worked with us, we kind of, we all know that. We very clearly worded that bid that says, based on budget, based on approval of the list, this is our plan, it can change. So they know that. But it gives them an opportunity to come, take a look. Any special situations that give them concern, it's a chance for them to look. I'll tell you that of the three, there's only one that comes and actually looks at it. The other two just bid it based on, you know, their knowledge.
They're looking at the road and if they're assuming an amount of asphalt that they're going to be spreading.
Yeah, well, and we're paying them by the ton, so even.
That's what I meant.
They don't even have to assume it that close, because we calculate based on a tonnage on, you know, the roads we're going to do. So it's, it's the price they're giving us is a price per ton or a price per square yard for reclamation or a price. And whether it's this road or that road, doesn't make that big of a difference to them. Unless it's something like Mass Road, you know, where, oh boy, that's a whole different animal and that would affect the price.
Just going along those lines, do you have three alternative scenarios? In other words, scenario one, this is the road list, assuming the budget passes and the road plan warrant article passes. And this is scenario two, the budget passes, but the road plan doesn't. And scenario three, the budget is default and we don't have a road plan. So that regardless of what happens, we've got a plan, at least to discuss a starting point.
Well, I can tell you, we do not have three separate pieces of paper, but we have a list. And we have had discussions internally on, based on our resources, based on what we've got to work with, what would our recommendation to the board be? And I'll tell you right now that there's, we don't have, if that road bond doesn't pass, it's an ugly situation. So we don't have a definitive recommendation. It's going to be very much a discussion involving you guys and us and what DPW is capable of doing in-house. We have some ideas, but they're not.
It would come down to a very short list.
Yeah.
And you'd be seeking our input.
Or some creative solutions that you may or may not find palatable. So, you know, it's not, it's certainly not something I'd be prepared to talk about tonight.
Yeah.
But I can tell you that we have had discussions and we have several options that we're prepared to come in and discuss.
You have basically some preliminary plans and thoughts of how to go if, if this happens or if that happens.
Yeah.
Okay, Scott?
One more. I know we've had really nice success with that shouldering machine and we had, that was in the budget a couple of years ago. We had, I thought we also talked about these portable traffic lights and I was curious as to.
And then your factor.
What happened with that?
I just threw that in my recycling bin today. I was going through my files, that thing came up again and I dinged it. So that, I think the P O, I'm not sure if it survived last year or not. There's only so many, so long we can carry.
Well, I thought we had it as an encumbrance at one point.
We did, but that has a sunset life. I've tried to get a hold of that guy, I don't even think he's in the state anymore. So I, literally that thing came up and I just dinged it. So as far as I'm concerned, that's done and we'll have to budget accordingly for the next great convention that comes down the bike.
Along the same lines, we had, I remember the discussion back then when we were looking at the shouldering machine. We were looking, we had actually a list of roads we were going to go out to bid on. Have those roads all been shouldered that were on that list?
I believe so. I certainly think that was our intention that first summer. And we try to keep up with now. Now, that doesn't mean to say that there are roads that need shouldering around town.
Right, understood. You had a very specific list.
Yeah, this, I'll tell you this winter.
How much, I mean, I've seen on the back road how much you did in one day. It was like, wow, that thing really is impressive.
I don't know if you've noticed it, but the crews, we are taking advantage of this winter and they would love to get that thing out, because, you know, we've got the greater crew doing shouldering and ditching.
Yeah, it's been seen a lot, yeah.
And the excavator crew, and we're actually talking about bringing the second excavator to town earlier, because we have a lot of ditch line we want to get to. And the greater crews kind of winding down what they can do. So we're talking about getting that extra excavator. And I don't know if you noticed it, but we got a roadside mower in town, believe it or not. Trying to get a jump on that, getting ahead on this season and he's actually knocking down the woody stuff on the sides. So we jumped on that early, too.
And I've seen crews out de-liming trees on the side of the road.
Yeah. No, and I'll tell you one thing, all the comments I've gotten from residents, they're very happy with it. They're glad to see it done and they've been talking very positive about the crews. All right? Carl can go now?
Are you done, Mr. Gross?
There's been a request for a five-minute break. Okay, we're back. All right, so our next item of business is the town administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your meeting schedule is in your book, your packet, and it's just tonight's meeting. You have a light week. Consensus folder includes the AP warrants, a deposit voucher for the Grassman statue fund, the 150 from Gostown Police Association that you voted on earlier, an event permit for the Proudie Ultimate Bike Ride on July 13th, raffle permit for various raffles related to the Villa Augustina's penny sale on March 10th, a charter for the Fire Station Improvement Ad-Hoc Committee, and the Valek Lewholland Growth Fund Authorization Card. You'll see more of those coming in for different funds by the time of year.
Question, is there a reason why the other ad-hoc committee's not on here?
Because I have it as a separate item to discuss, because the fire one was already discussed at a meeting and he just put it in the format.
Okay.
Motion to accept the consensus folder presented.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, four zero.
Thank you. For correspondence, you have an email from Attorney Cordell Johnson requesting the board's authorization to release Attorney Fillmore's legal opinion to, that she gave the town regarding tax cap.
Will we sing it to who?
For them to release it because it was a subject of discussion on the House floor and it seemed to have been misrepresented, saying that they told us to amend it to 100% and that wasn't passage. Right.
Okay, was there a motion made in the second?
Is it seconded?
Yes.
No, for legal opinion.
Oh, sorry, not legal opinion.
So we have Scott made the motion, Dave seconded it.
Right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. New Hampshire Retirement System came down and did.
Can I, I just want to backtrack. In the email, this is from Cordell Johnston. In the second paragraph, I'm sorry, the first paragraph, it was, it says, I overheard one of the, this is a quote, I guess that was on the.
The House floor.
I overheard one of the selectmen say that the New Hampshire Municipal Association advised them to do this. I don't recall anybody saying that. The only thing that was said was.
Might have been misunderstood as they heard it.
Well, our town attorney advised us that it was amendable and so did, right, but.
And that's the purpose for releasing this.
Right, okay.
Right, to clarify that.
I just wanted to clear that up.
New Hampshire Retirement System did come down and do a random audit because they had gotten an anonymous phone call regarding retirees working 32 or more hours a week. So they did conduct their audit. And based on their review, found Gostown to be in compliance with a few exceptions and those department heads have been notified of a few of the issues.
Is there any penalty that we have with respect to these?
No, they look for patterns.
Okay.
You know, if someone's working 34 hours every week, then it probably would be a penalty, but.
These appear to be one-time ran, you know.
Yeah, one time for each.
Each individual, okay.
So the department heads were notified and we can watch that.
Right, also accounting, because it's very possible that somebody might work 25 hours one week and they may work eight hours the next week and it might be all combined, come in as 33 hours and it would appear that they work over the 32, but it really constituted two weeks, sir. Nick?
Just a question, when you say random sampling, were these random samplings of pay periods or random samplings of individuals? In other words, was an individual looked at over the long term?
Yes, actually, they looked at all of 2011 and the current 2012.
Okay, thank you.
Assessors' recommendations, intent of timber cut, map four, lot 20, veterans' tax credit, map two, lot 6213, elderly exemptions, map three, lot 37C1-103, map six, lot 17B-91 and 22-46, map 14, lot 53A and map 34, lot 149. Also tax lien deferral on map 34, lot 17 and 149.
Okay, we'll need a motion to, Nick?
I just have a question. In my conservation recap this evening, the board had some interest in the timber cut, map four, lot 20. So, just so, I won't do it now, just to get ahead of ourselves, but there were some questions they had on that and some recommendations.
Did they talk to the assessor?
No, they had not. They asked that the board be aware of it.
Okay.
Okay, but how long is that? We have a certain amount of time to act on them. If we don't act on them, they're automatically, they automatically get approved, so is it something?
They just asked that because it's a sensitive area and has very steep slopes, that we send a letter to the state forester or communicate the board of selectmen, because I believe it's our purview, the timber cuts. The, just stating the concerns of the Conservation Commission that they should make sure that the slopes are stabilized and the wetlands down below are not impacted in any way.
This is my question, has staff looked at this?
Well, it's kind of one of those gray areas where the timber cuts come in, they kind of gets, it's really looked at as a tax item.
Right, but I'm just saying, but has staff had the opportunity to look? Before we go forward with sending a letter to the state fore, I would think that somebody from staff.
I think it's the forestry service that oversees the actual cut.
Yeah. Yeah. This is, this is almost like a courtesy, the intent to cut. It's, we have, you really don't have many grounds for denying intent to cut.
No.
And they weren't asking for that.
Okay.
They were just asking that we just at least give the state forestry...
So that when they oversee it, they can be sensitive to that.
Okay, let me, let me ask a question. Do their minutes reflect their concerns?
Yes. Yes, it is in the...
Send a copy to the state forester.
Well, what I was gonna suggest, so that we don't get things mixed up, okay? That we send a copy of that portion of the minutes?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Makes sense. That'd be fine.
Okay, good.
They were just giving this board the courtesy because that's where they come.
Well, I mean, all we can do is, that's what their concern is, I mean...
Accedon, yep.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You know, we have that timeframe and if we don't act, it's automatic. I think, what is it, sixty days?
Need a motion to accept the assessor recommendation.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Okay, and the assessor has provided you some follow-up information regarding addressing a request for suppression of online property information and also the legal opinion from LGC's at seven C in your packet. As you recall, Scott was recommending that we have a...
Yeah.
Policy to authorize him to suppress online property data information.
I would, I would prefer to see this policy written somewhere. Exactly what is the policy? What, what portions of the public data elements are gonna be redacted? Physical cards, online information, I mean, I don't read it here.
Physical cards, you can't.
Physical card, no.
No, you can't.
This is for online data only and I think it's just going to be the vision online because it's very easy just to un-click a box for a certain property.
But what would, what would appear in the missing data boxes? And especially if it's a person's name.
It would be, it wouldn't appear at all.
The name would be there.
No, nothing would appear, is my understanding. It just wouldn't be published online. So if someone wanted information on that lot, they would have to come into town hall.
Nothing on the lot at all?
That's my understanding.
It'd just be a data card saying, you know, map four lot twenty, that's all it would say.
There'd be nothing next to the, there'd be nothing next to it.
Right.
I, I'm against it. I, I think in today's day and age, you can do searches on Zaba search and all these public database searches. You can find somebody if you really want to. And I just think that it's, it's time-consuming for us to have to then create a policy. Which ones are we gonna do? Which ones aren't we gonna do? I mean, there's, with Google Earth and all these different satellite images, you're gonna, anybody can see anybody's house or backyard or...
That's true, but...
It's just the way that it is.
They're requesting that their town not contribute to that.
Saying they're contrib...
They're requesting that the town not contribute that data to the internet.
I don't have a problem, I think it's a reasonable request.
And other towns do it all the time and then it's not like it's time-consuming and they haven't had many requests.
Could you bring examples of the written policy from these towns that do such practice?
Their policy is just to authorize the assessor to suppress the online data in the vision or whatever program they use, online data.
But it's available if you come into town hall.
It has to be.
Right.
It's the law to allow it on paper.
We're, we're in the twenty-first century, that's, you know, we, we have a virtual town hall.
Well, I don't think that's the issue. I think it's a request for a reason. I think it's a reasonable request.
I guess the, my, my only question is if, if I know the lot that I'm looking for, because I can't just haphazardly click on lots to find people.
You can search by owner's name. When you go to vision online, you can search by owner's name.
Right. And every lot that person owns is gonna come up.
Search on street and everyone who lives on that street pops up on the list.
Right.
And I can do the same thing if I come into town hall.
If I wanna know where Nick lives, I can, can I come in and say, I wanna know, does he live in this?
Here's the list.
Right.
You have to look through the list.
And what's the compelling reason? Because somebody works in drug law enforcement, I mean, what's the reason for this?
A police officer works in another town, lives in this town and wants his online data to be addressed.
Being a police officer.
It could be a number.
You know, it could be a Navy SEAL.
Right, there you go.
It could be a...
You know?
A marital issue where there's a restraining order against someone and you...
You're gonna find him anyway.
But I think is, you don't have to make it that easy for somebody to do it. Wants up, for those, I don't, I don't think it's an unreasonable request.
I'd like to have the full board vote on this issue.
Okay, we'll hold off on it, bring it up next week.
We'll be here next week. You'll have a full board next week? There you go. Post is postponed for next week, then they can vote without us.
Okay.
Okay, there will be a public information meeting on March eighth at Goffstown High School Gymnasium regarding the process to change zip code boundaries. There will be an article in Thursday's Goffstown News, I'm told, and representatives from the post office will be on hand to answer questions from the public. Also representative from US Senator Ayotte's office will be present. Chairman DeVanzo will attend as well as Fire Chief O'Brien and Police Chief Sullivan. The format will be a brief explanation why the town has requested this change in zip code and the postal service will talk about their survey requirement. We'll open the floor to questions of the US PS representatives regarding their survey process, results, timelines, and notification process if the change is approved.
This meeting on the eighth of March, is that at the high school, what time?
Gymnasium, seven o'clock.
Yeah, just so everybody's aware, I do have a planning board meeting that night and I was, I mean, and Lou were going to the planning board meeting, I'd have to be here. But I don't know if somebody else wants to go to the planning board meeting.
May I substitute for you?
At the planning board? No. That's fine with me. If you wanna go to this, I'll go to the planning board, that'll be fine. Unless somebody, Nick?
Just, can we reach out to the business owners? Because I know when we sent the letters, they went to property owners.
They went to Manchester.
They went to property owners. They didn't go to...
They went to the property owners because that's the database we have. We don't have a tenant database. However, one property, one business owner did come in and supplied me a list of property owners. He said, no, not property owners, businesses.
Business owners.
Business owners.
Tenants that are concerned, so I do have that list.
That were against it.
That are against it, yes.
They were against it, but I guess I know they...
And I visited one too.
And I have some business owners that are for it too. So it's split.
But the post, the, the change, the vote will be postal customers.
I asked that question of the postal service, I have not received an answer. I, the answer I received was whoever it affects will be surveyed.
Postal customers, that's what's in their regulations, it's, it's the postal customers.
That's what's bizarre about this, you know, because when you say who it affects, well, let's look at who it affects. It affects people in Manchester who have a similar address as people in Goffstown and they get the people's stuff from Goffstown and some of their stuff winds up in Goffstown. And then they, they, they might be in oh three, one oh four and they're getting...
But I think when they say who it affects, they mean whose mailing address is it gonna change.
Correct, the postal customer.
But you're right, you could argue everyone in Goffstown's affected by lost revenue.
Everybody in Gofftown affected by it because every person in oh three, oh four, five is theoretically subsidizing everybody that lives in the oh three, one oh two through the cable franchise.
Right, and I just don't wanna mix things up. That's our fault.
No, it's not our fault.
Because...
No, it's, we were assured that we were getting that revenue.
How many times we brought up?
Did we ever check up on that?
Yes, but...
How do we, how can we check it?
Well, I guess, how did we know? How did we find out?
Well, when we were in franchise negotiations, I brought it up then saying, is it still in place, your procedure for identifying? And they, the new people didn't know anything about it. Remember, last time we negotiated with AT&amp;T, now it's Comcast.
And, understood, but I, I guess as a suggestion, if this change doesn't go through, that we should on an annual basis check in with our cable provider.
And the franchise committee is aware of that and is building in an annual audit into the new franchise agreement. That still doesn't assure you that you're getting, because they still haven't put in place now. We, we discovered this problem six months ago and they still haven't got it in place now that we're getting those revenues from those hundred and eighty-seven homes because they're dealing with their software system and how can they do that?
Right, and we don't even know if we could even request the money back from Manchester because it would have to be substantiated in past records from them and they don't even know if they have that. So for say, to put the burden on a town of Goffstown with the vendor that can't even substantiate the difference between the two. You know, we just had this discussion about, about the online information. You say, get with it, we're in the modern age. Well, get with it, we're in the modern age. Everything is sorted by zip code. Everything federally is sorted by zip code. All the grants are done by zip code, you know, on the same token. Get in, get into the twenty-first century. What other towns in the state of New Hampshire have a split zip code? And all, and you know the irony about this? All the other ones that, that, that got theirs, Litchfield used to share, used to share with Manchester, okay? New Boston, Dunbarton and Bedford used to share, okay? They all got theirs, but they didn't have to go through this. The rule was changed and the way this rule was made, that the affected people, okay, are the ones that, only ones that could change it. And that's kinda bizarre.
I, I agree with all of those things. I, I think timing sometimes is a lot of this. It was brought to our attention because of the cable franchise. But as we talked about earlier, there are commercial business owners that are truly concerned with the impact that it's gonna have following last year, following the whole economic situation. And we're supposed to be business friendly and I'm just concerned that the added cost...
What is the fear?
Well, there's, there's costs if this change, if the change...
But the last time we did this eleven years ago, the post office said eighteen months. We're giving you eighteen months. I don't know what it is now, I don't know what the regulations are today.
And that's fine, but I would then look at everything we just discussed and ask, why is St. Ansem's being exempted? And that's gonna be a question that's gonna come up.
Cause they dry nationally.
It doesn't, so what? We're, we're, we're a town of one, we, we shouldn't have a divided border. We should have, get with the times.
And, and, or when, when you, when you flip on CNN or debate, it should say Goffstown, New Hampshire, not Manchester.
So I, I'm just saying, the business owners are gonna be asking that because they have costs.
They've made those attempts in newspapers and to get it correct, that it's Goffstown.
I'm just saying, there's gonna be, cause I've, I've heard that from business owners. How come they're being exempted?
I haven't heard the cost, they haven't...
I've, I've got a, you know, there's homeowners who are truly concerned that they wanna be associated in their mailing address for Goffstown. So it's both sides.
No, 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 I'm saying they're concerned, why, if it's so important, why is Goffstown, why is St. Ansem's being exempted?
While St. Az isn't part of our Comcast agreement, so we're not losing any franchise money to them. They don't register motor vehicles here, I don't believe.
They don't register dogs.
So, we're not, as a town, we're not losing revenue because St. Az isn't included. But, you know, on the businesses, I didn't hear the cost as, what was expressed to me was the fact that when their mailing address changes to Goffstown, that people are gonna think of the village and therefore they won't travel that extra eight miles.
I heard that.
That's the one I heard.
I did hear that, but I also heard the cost.
But I'll tell you...
Changing stationary and billing.
One thing, one thing about the, about that, and that also came up, I believe it was in Southern Old Hampshire Planning, the fact that the center of communities in New England, like New Hampshire, Massachusetts, when you think of Goffstown, okay, traditionally people thought of the village, but that is waning. That is going away, okay? So that, that should not be an issue any longer.
And my, my other question is that, I, I don't know, are there opportunities to make it Pinnardville? Has that ever been that?
That was the first option we looked at with its own unique address and they can't do that.
Why can't Grassmere have Grassmere?
I'm just, I was...
We don't have, we don't have the issues that we have.
We couldn't get a separate zip code.
Why are they being discriminated against? Why can't they have Grassmere?
Could it say, could it say Pinnardville, New Hampshire, oh three, oh four, five and Pinnardville and Goff, but at least identifies that?
You know, Grassmere used to have the train station.
And you couldn't do Manchester.
The original effort out of this board was to have the, a new zip code established for the mail courier routes in Pinnardville. And those four courier routes would still be serviced out of the same facility. The postal officials were the one that came back with us with a twist on that whole situation that due to the volume of mail being handled by the zero forty-five facility is low compared to a few years back.
Yeah, actually they peaked in two thousand and...
They're the ones that say, we now have the capacity in the zero forty-five facility to handle these four courier routes.
Yeah, I...
It will be at a, if, the, our original solution that, you know, consolidating or having a new zip code handled out of the old facility, one oh four facility was sort of a no-cost impact to them. There will be a cost impact to this postmaster here. His, the courier routes would leave zero forty-five and two minutes later, after leaving the building, they're, they're delivering mail. They're, you know, on the job, delivering mail. Working out of this facility here, they've got to drive ten, twelve minutes before they get out of their truck and deliver that first package. And so that, that will add to the length of the day to do their job.
But this one's already...
There's a potential, there's a potential that the postal service is gonna have increased costs to service these four courier routes.
But they're also doing Dunbarton. So they have ways to go to get to Dunbarton to deliver.
Yes, I read a report, actually the postal service peaked in two thousand and six for its mail. Since two thousand and six, that's, it's first-class delivered, first-class mail has dropped off tremendously. There are nine states that they are closing offices in. New Hampshire is not one of them.
Right.
New York.
California.
Connecticut. There, there are nine of them, New York and Connecticut, I mean, in this area. New York and Connecticut, they are losing. I don't believe Massachusetts, they're losing.
No.
But definitely not losing, there are nine cities. Yeah, there are nine cities. And I didn't email to you because you said that, you said you signed up for it.
Right.
With that, which was interesting. So anyway, all right, so you're gonna be there, Dave?
Yes, sir.
And I'll go to the planning board. Any other, anything further on that?
No, I just wanted to note that the post office people will only be there for one hour, seven to eight.
Okay.
Charter?
Quick presentation and...
They are not making a presentation.
No, they're not making a presentation.
We make a brief presentation and then we go into.
I'll work with you.
Okay.
Right, okay.
In accordance with the Board of Selectment rules and procedures, we submit the following draft charter for your consideration and that's at seven E, this is for the finance software ad hoc committee.
Yep, anybody have a chance to read it?
Yeah.
Any changes?
The only thing I wanna note is that because under committee membership, we have the finance director and because he's relatively new with the software, he would also like to bring Evelyn into this committee also because she's got more experience with the accounting software.
Okay, but that's not bringing in an extra vote, is it?
No.
Okay. All right, so we'll have a motion? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the charter for finance software ad hoc committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous.
Thank you. We posted a public notice in search of the oldest citizen in town in, I think it was in January and the, there was also an article published in the Goffstown News. We've had three submissions, the oldest being May Gruber, who will be one hundred on March sixth. And we have taken the liberty of getting information for proclamation. That's also in your signature folder. It's different from the draft, that, a little different, reformatted and...
Okay, so we need a motion?
Yes.
So move.
Is there a second? I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. You've got some FYIs here, labor legislation that we get emails from Divine Millamette and then Sheen, Finney, Bass and Green regarding new labor law legislation. One of them is coming up for vote March seventh, actually, regarding public employees' personnel records being not subject to the right to know law. The exemption, so it would become public information. It's not recommended by the committee, but it's going to a House vote.
We don't need any action on that, please?
Nope, this is just FYI. Also, right-to-know law training, LGC is willing to conduct in-house training for staff and local officials regarding right-to-know law on Tuesday, April tenth to twenty-fourth at seven. So we have contacted the high school to see which day is available.
Oh, Tuesday, okay.
That's a Tuesday, yep. They need twenty or more to be in attendance, so we will invite, if the school district wants to attend, and the towns in New Boston and Bedford.
Okay, I don't think it'd be a problem to get to twenty. If you have to, I think.
There are checking in schedules.
Perhaps some new members with the budget committee?
Yes, we'll invite all the committees.
Reach out for them.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll have two members on the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, it was well-attended, we did this maybe five or six years ago, and it was in here, and it was pretty crowded. So that's why I thought we'd get the theater at the school.
Because we've done them too on ADA and stuff.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I have for public session.
Okay. All right, now, the next item is selectmen's discussion. Do we have any new business?
I don't believe so.
What was this?
Yeah, you have the W W Today in America TV dot com as a reminder.
I didn't bring my notes, but I remember, I'll go by, I'll go by, by memory, yeah, hang on one second, that is number.
Was it Terry Bradshaw's show?
Yeah, yeah, and the fellow right around. Okay, I got contacted, you don't have anything in here, though, on it, right?
No, I don't.
Okay, I don't know if anybody had a chance to take a look at that, but I was contacted by a, I don't have my notes, the name was Mr. Writer, I'll call him Mr. Writer, W R I T E R. And we went through some of this, I had looked, I had gone through the website and stuff, and at first, when I got contacted, I wasn't sure what the subject of the conversation that we were going to have was. And then in discussing with him, I found out what it was, it was about the town. And he told me that we had been selected, I went through a conversation about, with him, about what, what was unique to Goffstown, what's attracted to Goffstown, and through these other issues, to see about doing a segment. And I had, I had asked him, you know, how did we get selected? And he wasn't sure, he said there were some different avenues, it could be something that we had, that gave us some national recognition, and I said, I'd like.
Wouldn't be changing zip codes, would it?
Well, he didn't bring that up, I asked, could it possibly be the Pumpkin Regatta or the Two-Fiftieth? But he wasn't sure, okay, because he's not the one that does it, apparently, you know, this is what he told. Then we got into a further discussion on it, and in filming the segment and everything, they do have a, what they call a scheduling fee. And a scheduling fee, I believe, was nineteen thousand five hundred dollars, okay? So I told, I.
The crack ceiling line.
Well, well, you know, maybe that's, I informed him that I did not have the ability to, you know, bind the town in any, in any way on anything like that, and that, so he asked me if we had a town manager. And I said, no, we have a Board of, we have a town administrator.
Contact you when we do.
So he said, he wanted to know if he could have a three-way conversation, and I told him that we couldn't do that unless every phone that was on had to be, had to be public and recorded.
He's emailed several staff members here, too, and, and several towns in the state of New Hampshire.
After I got off the phone with him, I left it with him that I would run it by the board, and he's going to contact me tomorrow, that I'd run it by the board to get a sense of the board. And then afterwards, I called Sue to put it on the agenda, and that's when she told me that she, that.
One town went quite far down the road, and the price was up to forty thousand.
Well, I mean, I, I didn't know, you know, I mean, I don't know, I don't know what, what the board wants to have a further discussion on this, but as far, if it's.
Motion to respectfully decline their offer.
Oh, it doesn't matter, you know.
Is this something Main Street might be interested?
Not for twenty thousand dollars.
Well, the only, the only other, the only other thought, though, that I had with it was, because I mentioned the Pumpkin Regatta and the Two Hundred and Fiftieth, okay, and then after talking to Sue.
You're never going to live that one down.
I, I don't know if there's anything that might be unique about Goffstown that would make them want to do it.
Oh, I think if you paid him, they'll come, no matter what.
No, 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 but I, I mean, I, and I don't know, okay? I just don't know if there's enough that we have that's unique about Goffstown.
We don't have the budget.
That's not what I'm.
So I'll amend my motion, motion to respectfully decline.
Okay.
Their offer unless it's without charge. Okay. Today in America is the first show of its, of its genre, hosted by Terry Bradshaw, that's geared towards the educated, affluent viewer, so I, I don't know. It's just Terry Bradshaw and this whole thing, I, I don't know, I just, I don't know. I'm not sold.
That's fine with me, I just wanted to bring it up and see.
I'm sure they have a staff of people going through directories, contacting every town in the country, every organization.
I'm not disagreeing with Nick.
For that nineteen thousand dollar scheduling fee.
Nope, nope.
For the honor of the jury.
Terry Bradshaw.
So that's my motion.
Okay. So I, obviously, we don't have Steeler fans on this board.
I love the Steels. I have a terrible towel at home to prove it.
Okay, Nick has a motion, I haven't heard a second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Then just, I need a copy of the motion to let them know what it is tomorrow.
Unless it's free.
Unless it's free.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that I have the motion, so that I don't get anything wrong.
I mean, I think they would have a tremendous show just watching us. And they should, they should be paying us, they should be paying us. Because we've got a lot of talent here.
To extrapolate this, the Goffstown News would be wanting money to.
Exactly.
Close up this meeting.
We should be, you should be paying us to sit here.
Okay, all right. Do we have any other new business? If we don't have any other new business, we have any old business?
Oh, my goodness.
Committee reports, library.
The library didn't meet, they didn't have a quorum, and Steve was there, but they didn't, you know. They, they did talk to, I guess, he said that they just talked to people who were, who were running for office, and that was about it.
Parks and Rec?
Parks and Rec met, as we're having a public hearing on March next week.
March fifth.
With respect to fees. What else did they go over? What I had stated before about signs, they're, they're, they're having discussions with SUSA Signs about the possibility of erecting a sign to promote their programs, and they're going back and forth on LED versus, you know, traditional, hit they go in, traditional, it's so expensive, they're like triple the cost. And then they were looking to perhaps, you know, again, use the Police Association one as a refurb, but, so that's, that was about it.
Okay, and what do we have, budget next?
Yeah, well, that's done, I mean. It wasn't any budget.
No, no, it's listed on here.
Yeah.
I'm just following what she had, so I didn't know when you guys met.
I, they met the same time as Parks and Rec, and I couldn't be at two places.
How come?
What?
How come?
They changed their meeting date for this one.
They changed their meeting date and.
They named two meeting dates in February and March, and they're going to decide.
Well, I just figured that you'd be at both places so that you could give a report. Oh, okay, then HTC did meet, as we all know.
Talk about plaster.
Yeah, talk about plaster with that, so I think Elizabeth stated pretty, pretty much. I don't know if anybody has any questions on what she.
So let's, for the record, the sole source is through which vendor?
Target New England.
Target New England, who has done, existed, they've done a work already, they were the low bidder before, they are qualified through these different.
Oh, yeah, well, he's been working on the building for, he's the one that did original let it be on the front of the building.
Fine, I'll make that motion that we waive our purchasing policy and proceed with sole sourcing the remaining plaster work as requested by the HTC.
Okay, is there a second?
Yes, second.
Need further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. I don't know. Well, this other one here, but she didn't mention it, there's the, this additional work is for the painting and the ceiling in the auditorium. That's got nothing to do with this original work that was in there. In other words, the ceiling has some stains in the corners because the, 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 oh, the ceiling was done before the roof, the new slate roof was on, so there are some stains in there. And they wanted to, they wanted to redo the stenciling on there, that was a stenciling that was done by volunteers. And they wanted to redo that stenciling with the, with the stenciler. And his stenciling is covered, I believe.
By Grant.
I believe his stenciling is, the stenciler work is covered, so what needs to be done is that the ceiling needs to be where the water stains, the older stains. Yeah, repainted, and what's going to do, when they do that, they're going to go over that, happened, they're going to be going over that stenciling and.
Was that included in the scope of the work with the sole source?
No, 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 this has got nothing to do with it, this is separate.
Well, you could do that on your own, then. We don't have to be in, that's under five thousand dollars, we don't get involved in that, right?
Okay, I don't think so, I mean, she didn't bring it up, it's under two thousand dollars, yeah, it's seventeen fifty.
Yeah, that's why.
And that was also, the low bidder was Target on that one. Okay, I don't think that needs to.
That's near committee's purview, I don't think it comes to us.
Okay.
Those things have been done when? We promised last fall.
June fifth.
What did Elizabeth say? If I was running the project, it would have been done for the Two-Fiftieth.
The bills have, bills have to be paid before, you know.
Right, yeah, it's June.
The requests for reimbursements have to be submitted to the state.
Okay, next, planning, conservation.
Conservation met last week, we had three presentations, one was ninety-four Dumont Park Road, map twenty-five, lot thirty-eight. There's a proposal to build a home along with improvements to the property. The commission recommended to, or for that project, that slopes be stabilized, erosion control measures be taken along with silt fencing. We had a proposal, our presentation, one forty-four Moose Club Park Road, map twenty-one, lot one fifteen. The owners are seeking variances to build an attached garage to an existing single-family home, and the commission just will be forwarding their concerns with drainage, just that when the project is approved, that there's some consideration of the increased building coverage percentage and that drainage is taken into account. Twenty-three Arrowhead Drive, map forty-three, lot seventeen, there was a presentation, a new home will be constructed once the existing home is demolished, and the commission will send their comments to ZBA that they actually have no issues or concerns, they were very pleased with the plans. They were very environmentally considerate when designing the project, and they were very happy with that. I already addressed the intent to cut permit issues, and the last issue that we had, that the commission asked me to bring to the board, they had a request from Boy Scout Troop Ninety-Nine to camp on the top of the mountain on May nineteenth, and they've done that in the past. They would need this board's commission, permission as well as a fire burning permit for a campfire that they'd have to obtain from the fire department that night or that day, depending on conditions.
Well, when, when is this?
May nineteenth.
Well, it's very possible that Bill Up and Conquer, that bans permits for it, they won't need it.
That's very possible, but in any event, they would need permission from this board first.
But it's on-town property, so they need permission.
Yes.
Well, that doesn't make any difference, because they want to have a thing on the lawn in front of the alleged state house, and they don't want to have a permit for it.
And the commission had no issues, they supported.
Property owner, though, would have to give permission to use the property for that purpose.
If the claim is a public property. Yes.
And in this, the weather conditions we've had, and very little snow and rain.
That would be contingent on, obviously, the conditions and the chief.
So do you need a motion from us?
They would, the, the commission would like permission from this board, yes.
Is this the mountain where the town owns land, or the water precinct land?
I believe it's the town on land.
Yeah, it doesn't say which moon, north or south.
One mountain is town conservation land, town-owned conservation, the other mountain is totally water precinct.
Yeah, they usually go to the water precinct when, when they camp, I think.
Do we have permission to?
No, we wouldn't.
We can't, okay, that, so they need to clarify their request.
Well, can we give our permission if it is on town-owned property, and if not, that they can go to the water commission? Make a motion that, to provide permission to Boy Scout Troop Ninety-Nine to camp on the mountain on town-owned property.
Second, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
And then maybe if we could just send a note to Patty.
Yeah.
To send to the commission, just so that they know that if it's not on town property, that they go to the water commission.
You said that they've done this in the past?
Yes.
And I don't remember.
I think it was on the, on a village precinct land.
So it could be.
That seems to be more popular for camping.
The one without the towers.
Yes.
Without houses at the top, you know, the road up leading up, so they have to make in.
Yeah, I think that's the one.
It's, yeah, all right, just do that, all right, whatever, and just, so who's going to contact them?
I will have Patty do that.
All right, and just let her find out where it is, and if it is, make sure that she directs them to the proper.
Kevin and Patty.
Okay, good, all right. Planning board did meet, and there was a joint meeting with the planning, actually, it was for purposes of presentation. It was notices as joint meeting, because it was going to be more than a quorum of members of the Board of Selectmen there. That was a presentation by Southern New Hampshire Planning on the regional, on the CTAP program. And then later on, on the whole business, the planning board did hear, presentation was continued for the forty-eight units down off of Moose Club Park. And the board did deliberate, and they voted four to three to approve all the conditional use permits and all the waivers that were requested. And I have to tell the board that I voted no on that, and one of the reasons that I voted no on that was one of the conditional use permits was to modify, actually, the question that came up, the legal, the technical question that came up was whether or not you have a conditional use permit existing for the mixed-use development, and that is a request for a conditional use permit. Does that alter the original conditional use permit? Or how does it interact with that, so?
You say, could you just clarify that when you say the original, what was the?
Well, there was a conditional, in order for the mixed use, they had to have a conditional use permit.
Okay.
Okay, so now, in that, in that site plan, there was the understanding that the square footage of residential would not exceed the square footage of commercial, so they would not exceed fifty-fifty percentage-wise, okay? This proposal, originally, they had proposed twenty-five units of housing down there. Now they were coming back with that, and that was, that lot is subs, is subdivided, that is a separate lot from the mixed-use total, okay? There's three lots that make up the mixed-use complex. So those forty-eight units, and there is no way that you can go from the other portion of the mixed-use development to that, because you have to cross, and there's no way to cross. So you can't cross it by walking, you can't cross it by driving without going out right onto Mast Road and down into Moose Club to get into the, into, into it. And what this does, what the request was, to change it to approximately two-thirds, two to one. So in other words, the. So in other words, the residential square footage was approximately two-thirds of the project versus one-third of the commercial. Okay? The difficulty that I had with that was because at the last meeting, I had asked the applicant in lieu of the fact that it's a separate lot, in lieu of the fact that there is no physical way to join, to connect with the rest of the project, why are they keeping that as part of the mixed-use and why are they not coming and asking for that to be separated out of the mixed-use and, and treat that separately as a lot? And their whole argument was, well, we do, this is all the time, it's not unusual, over in Bedford, we do this. And that you have all these on the, okay, fine. So they made their case of why they wanted this to be part of the mixed-use project. That was the last time. So this time, I was looking at the plan, okay? And I'm looking at the plan and they wanted to come, and Barbara had brought up the point that we, the Planning Board was not requiring the applicant to show proof as to why they needed to do this. They were just coming in and requesting and usually when somebody comes in and if you come in and you, you ask, you request an extension on your site plan because the one year is coming up, the question is, well, why? Their question was not, that was not made of the applicant to show, to demonstrate a need for this. It was just a request and the Planning Board was gonna act on it. And the concern that I had was, when I look at that, I have a project that is supposed to be a fif- the commercial foot, the commercial square footage is not supposed, is not supposed to be exceeded by the residential. I have a project that was presented to the board originally in conception that it was going to be just like the complex that they built on one fourteen and Wallace Road in Bedford. It was gonna be that type of a commercial project. That project has eventually morphed into what we have. When you look at it, they requested the town to put a traffic light in between two traffic lights. The board granted the traffic light with the understanding we were gonna have commercial development on that, in that area. And that the commercial, the residential was not going to exceed the amount of commercial square footage. So the town requested that. That project has changed and there's only three lots for commercial besides the Rite Aid. And I'm looking at that. And when you look at that, you have a traffic light that goes in, you have a Rite Aid on the left, you have a park on the right, you have housing that goes around the park. You have housing that goes around here and you have housing that's down there. And if you just grant this conditional use without making the applicant give a reason that it's required, I can see the applicant coming in in two years from now saying they built these units, they've had these three lots that were over here that they can't rent. You have empty lots in Shaws, you have empty lots in Hanaford. And they want a conditional use permit to develop those three lots into residential and they're gonna come in with a plan. And at this point, how are you gonna say no? Because all the conditions that they need to meet for the conditional use permit to allow those forty-eight units, they're going to meet those same, those same requirements that are on there and more. What they're gonna meet is all the stuff that was presented to us prior to from Southern New Hampshire Planning on the alternate build-out which, uh, which emphasized multifamily concentrations, okay? I said, you know what this also does? Everybody that lives here can walk to Hanaford, they can walk to Shaws, they can walk to Rite Aid. We have public transportation out that comes out to, to the, that goes to Manchester. These people can walk to the public transportation. These were all items that were talked about in the alternate build-out. Not the community build-out, but the alternate, number two, the first alternate, okay? Which was all high-density, okay? And I said, they'll still meet the mixed-use because they got the, the Rite Aid. And it'll be all about, here we have a major parcel of land on Mast Road in Pinnardville that's zoned commercial. And what do we have? Multifamily, we've added a traffic light. And I'll tell you, people in town wanna know, why did the plant, why did we add another light between those two lights? And we had Representative Burke come in here a few weeks back, discuss that. And David talked about how, when the Sioux Commission did it, it affected that. And, you know, that's why I voted no.
And it passed by a slim margin, right?
Yeah, four to three. And, you know, the thing again, the thing is, 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 I know Scott has brought up to the board that people say to him, what does the Board of Selectmen do to bring com- businesses into the town? Well, here we have something that goes along with that. We try, no matter what we do, sometimes it's out of our hands.
It's challenging.
It was brought up at their session, though, the possibility of putting a commercial business where these apartments had been designed to be built was very slim.
I am, Dave, see, I understand that, I don't have a...
It's not on the main road.
But I don't have a problem with that. It should be, what I suggested, that the Planning Board should deny it and it should tell the applicant, if you wanna, you, you wanted twenty-five originally when you came in here. You want forty-eight?
Why was it so good?
It's subdivided, it's subdivided, it's a separate lot. Then come in and do that one separate because by granting the conditional use permit, just look at the big picture. You now have a mixed-use that you modified where you had a control as to how much residential-commercial ratio you have. Now you're exceeding that by two-thirds. They're gonna come back, you got three lots that are commercial, they're gonna make the perfect case why those three lots, when you look at the plan and the action that the Planning Board has done, it is not unreasonable for the applicant to come in and want a conditional use to make those three commercial lots residential. They're surround, there's a park, there's housing, residential housing in the back, you have it on the side, you're in walking distance. All the conditions that you had to meet to give them that conditional use, they will meet and they will meet them better because there will be no restriction at that point on how much commercial.
Wouldn't the conditional use permit, though, on the commer- the mixed-use part, the front piece, still apply?
No.
They waived it for the lot that was subdivided off.
Well, that's what the Planning Board did. That's one of the reasons why Steve Dutton, that was the big concern that Steve had. What this does technically, because there's a conditional use permit.
It's one project, right? Both lots.
Everything, right.
Under one proj- just a phase of the original project.
Correct, right. So there is no restriction as to the commer- the, the ratio between them. So that makes it not an unreasonable request for somebody to come in and ask for a conditional use permit to build residential units on those, on a commercial because you still have the Rite Aid which makes it meet mixed-use.
Well, I would hope that the Planning Board would see that that's a front lot and that is a commercial district and that was the original intent that the, that more commercials be developed.
By denying it and making them come in with a request to subdivide that off since that lot has no, nothing to do with the rest of this project, a- as a project. It's separate, you can't walk to it, you can't drive to it, okay? It's not good for commercial, it's residential.
You can't drive to it internally within the lot.
Right, that's what I'm saying. You gotta go out on Mast Road.
You can't drive to it.
I mean, to the main portion. There is no connection to the main portion of it. That is, come in separately.
Could it be tied to some financing, workforce housing, some type of tax incentives for the developer? Maybe that's why they wanna keep it as one.
I don't know.
The plan passed, so all this discussion is for not, it's just...
But that may be one of the considerations, the way they're...
Saying why he voted as he did.
The way they're financing it.
Well, I, I can, I can understand and I'm just, you know, I, we discussed this as a board and I said I, in the beginning, that I had a concern about it for the commercial, what it's gonna do for the, for the commercial aspect of the project, since I was there when this was originally presented and how this project has morphed into something other than what it was presented to. And here we have a traffic light in the middle of two other traffic lights and I don't feel that...
They still have some hurdles, I guess, to get through the public service.
We'll see. That's my report. Uh, do we have any other public business? Nick?
Just a question. Is there, do we need discussion of the non-public?
Yeah, they, you have two items now, under the same RSA.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just came in today.
Yes.
So that being no other public business, we will need a motion for non-public. And I, most that we might do is just a motion when we come out, possibly, and then we'd be adjourned.
Motion to non-public RSA ninety-one dash A, colon, three, Roman two, parentheses A, which is compensation.
And discipline.
And discipline, thank you.
Right, and discipline. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Roll call?
Yes, yes.
Yes?
Yes.
We're a non-public session. Thank you.